Saritos residents and the members of our community, I would like to call to order the Thursday, March 27, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Regular Meeting. The invocation will be led by Bishop David Montgomery of Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and the pledge will be led by Boy Scout Troop 72.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity. We are grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening for the City Council meeting. We are grateful for our many wonderful blessings that Thou hast bestowed upon us. We are grateful for this democracy that allows us to choose our representatives, to represent us on the local, state, and national levels. And we pray that Thou will grant them wisdom, especially here in Saritos with our newly-formed City Council, bless them that they might be able to study the issues and make those decisions based upon all the information that they can gather, grant them the wisdom to make the choices for the citizens here in Saritos. We are so grateful for them and their public service. We are grateful for the, and we ask you to continue to bless the first responders, that they might be blessed as they keep us safe. And we pray that Thou will continue to bless our schools, that they might be free from violence, that they might be places of refuge and places of learning. We pray that Thou will be with us at this meeting, that we might be cordial and polite to one another as we discuss these ideas and we say these things tonight in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
May the audience please rise for the flag ceremony. All those uniformed, right-hand salute, all those not right-hand over your heart, please show me the pledge religions, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Boy Scout Troop 72. Would you please share your names and grades and what schools you go to? We'd love to hear.
My name is Edison Chan and I go to Whitney High School.
Oh, oh, also, I'm a senior, sorry.
I'm Brandon Wong, I'm a senior at Whitney High School.
My name is Colin Wen, I'm in sixth grade in Leo Elementary.
My name is Soren Bing, I'm in fifth grade and I go to Gonsalves Elementary.
All right, thank you, boys. Thank you, Boy Scout Troop 72. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and agency member Hong.
Present.
Council and agency member Polito.
Present.
Council and agency member Say.
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama.
Here, thank you. Next, we move to item 5A, Presentations. Testing. Eagle Scouts, the rank of Eagle Scout, which is awarded to only 2% of all members of the Boy Scouts of America, is the highest award that can be earned in Boy Scouting. This evening, the City of Saritos will proudly recognize two members of Troop 72 who have achieved this awesome honor through their hard work, perseverance, and dedication. The following Eagle Scouts have completed outstanding projects, which are identified as follows. Edison Chan, will you please come up? I'm gonna give you the mic in a moment, but I want to share with everybody here that Edison Chan's Eagle Scout project involved the rehabilitation of three basketball courts and six backboards for the Holy Family Church in Artesia. With the assistance of 26 volunteers, Edison Chan and his team cleaned and repainted all the lines and markings on the basketball courts, resurfaced the backboards, and installed new nets. This project took approximately 143 hours to complete and demonstrates Edison's perseverance and concern for others. Thank you. Would you like to please say a few words about your journey to Eagle Scout and your project?
Well, for starters, I started Boy Scouts when I was, or I started Cub Scouts when I was in third grade, and now I'm a senior, so it's been quite a while of my journey to Eagle Scout. And along the way, there's been a lot of challenges, a lot of fun moments, but the best part of it all is that I get to look back on my memories and my beginning of Cub Scouts, which is the precursor to Boy Scouts, and I got to see how far, not only I've come through like the ranks, but also how much I've grown as a person. So for my Eagle Scout project, we, as you said, it took quite a while, and we spent, I think, almost a year trying to plan out and gather resources, communicate with the church, the proper date and time to work on the project. And along the way, I learned, I learned that not everything in life happens because you want to, there's a lot of like hiccups and a lot of obstacles, so yeah, I'm very grateful for this experience at Boy Scouts.
So, the City of Saritos and the Sarito City Council would like to please present you with this proclamation, and I'd like to invite all my council colleagues, if we could all take a photo with Eagle Scout Edison Chan, please.
All right, everybody, right over here on three, photo, one, two, three, one, two, three, and let's take one more, one, two, and three.
Did you want to bring up any family members to take a photo with us?
I'll bring my, oh, I'll bring my mom, my dad, and my brother, so.
Hi again, thank you.
Oh my gosh.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, make sure you can be seen.
Yes, please, right over here on three, we'll take three, one, two, three, one, two, three, and let's take one more, one, two, and three.
Wait, look, look.
One, two, three.
Good job, Stein.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Don't leave. Like what I'm saying is.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Brandon Wong. Brandon Wong's Eagle Scout project, oh, come on up. Brandon Wong's Eagle Scout project facilitated an eyeglass and hearing aid donation drive from the local community. The collected eyeglasses and hearing aids were donated to the Buena Park Noon Lions Club, who refurbishes them and provides them to those in need. Brandon's goal was to collect 100 eyeglasses and a minimum of 10 hearing aids. But with the help of 20 scouts and other volunteers, Brandon's project was able to collect 1,700 eyeglasses. And more than 10 hearing aids. The project took 150 hours of planning and preparation and demonstrates Brandon's organizational abilities and concern for others. Brandon, would you like to please share with us about being an Eagle Scout and your project?
Yeah, so I started off in Cub Scouts in first grade, and then I, now I'm a senior, so it's been 12 years, I've worked for this for 12 years. And I think my Eagle project, I think the thing I'm most proud of is not the number, but just knowing that I've had an impact on the community. Honestly, it didn't really matter how many glasses I collected, because each glass, each pair of glasses was one person that I've helped, and hearing aids and glasses, they're really expensive, and so it's just some people who are less fortunate, they can't afford them, and so I think it's a really good, or really cool that I've been able to help so many people. And yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon, and here's a City of Saritos proclamation from the City of Saritos and the City Council. And if my colleagues can please come up so we could take a group photo with Brandon. And then after that, you can invite your family up, okay?
If my mom, dad, sister, and grandma could come up, please?
Three, one, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, and three. Job's done. Mom, job, job.
Okay, next, I'd like to bring up the representative from Assembly, our Assembly Member Sharon Kirk Silva's office, to make a special presentation to our two Eagle Scouts from Assembly Member Sharon Kirk Silva.
Edison and Brandon, could you come up, please? Let's make it real quick, because everybody's all waiting.
Mr. Chan, could you come and take a picture for me? Since Honorable Mayor has mentioned everything about Eagle Scout, I'm not gonna do anything, just take a picture.
This way, in the mid. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more, one more, one more.
All right, thank you to Joe Pack and to Assembly Member Sharon Kirk Silva for presenting that to our Eagle Scouts. Thank you to the Eagle Scouts. Business Spotlight, Panoy Panay Filipino Food Restaurant. Panoy Panay is a local Saritos restaurant that has been serving Filipino cuisine to the community for the past 33 years. Established in 1991, Panoy Panay was a pioneer for Filipino food in Saritos. The restaurant, which is located on the southeast corner of South Street and Pioneer Boulevard, has continued to flourish with authentic home-cooked flavors catering to the residents of Saritos, including a growing Filipino population. You're in Lincoln Station, right? Yeah, Lincoln Station. Now known as a leader in the Filipino food industry, Panoy Panay has expanded from a one-door restaurant space to a 3,400 square foot space to accommodate its loyal and growing customer base. Customers of Panoy Panay enjoy traditional Filipino dishes such as lechon, pancit, and chicken adobo. A wide selection of seafood and pork dishes are also available. Panoy Panay also specializes in catering for all occasions. Known for using the finest ingredients and consistency, quality, the restaurant strives to remain affordable while providing an outstanding customer experience. With a unique and diverse menu, Panoy Panay's goal is to introduce delicious food and Filipino cultural to the community. I should have told you to come up at the start, please come on up. I'm learning, I'm learning. Panoy Panay Filipino Restaurant is located at 11900 South Street, Suite 107, Saritos, California 90703. Restaurant hours are Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM to 6:30 PM, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So congratulations to our Business Spotlight, Panoy Panay Filipino Food Restaurant. Can you please introduce yourself and tell us more about Panoy Panay?
To our honorable, honorable mayor and members of City Council and Saritos residents. I am Jose Marlo Cruz, and I'm the owner of Panoy Panay Filipino Fast Food Restaurant in Saritos, which has been in business for the past 33 years. Filipino food is unique and diverse, and our goal always is to promote our food and culture to the community. I moved to Saritos back in 1985. I, together with my wife, we raised our only son, Lauren, who is a product of the ABC School District. FYI, Panoy Panay, the word Panoy Panay is a Tagalog slang, a term which refers to a Filipino man and a Filipino woman. FYI. Again, I'm honored, and I thank you to be nominated and as a recipient of the Business Spotlight Award. Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you, Marlo, and I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the Sarito City Council, a City of Saritos proclamation for the Business Spotlight of Panoy Panay Filipino Food Restaurant. And if my colleagues can please come up so we could take a photo with Marlo?
Right over here on three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Okay, now let's look here, everybody. Okay, so Marlo, would you like, Marlo, would you like to bring any of your team here for one more photo?
Yes. Can I ask my wife Annabelle and Lauren to come up, my son?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Right over here, please. On three, one, two, three, one, two, three, and one more, please, one, two, three, right here, please.
Congratulations, okay? Thank you, Aunt.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, all right.
And now we have a special presentation from our Assembly Member Sharon Kirk Silva.
Thank you, that's really outstanding, since 1985. And, you know, Mayor, Mayor been calling you Marlo, but your last name is Cruz and your first name is Jose. Yeah, and then he's calling you by your middle name, huh?
No, it's part of my personal.
Part of, learning something new every day. Well, I just want to present this certificate on behalf of the Assemblyman Sharon Kirk Silva, representing 67 Assembly District. In honor of your selection as a Saritos City's Business Spotlight, on behalf of the 67 Assembly District, I commend you for your commitment and dedication to serving the local community. Your exceptional establishment is a treasure in the City of Saritos. Best wishes for continued success, and thank you for your contributions to the Saritos Regional Business Community. March 27, 2025, Assemblyman Sharon Kirk Silva.
Nobody's clapping. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Marlo.
Thank you.
Item 5B. Special announcement for the 2025-2026 season of performances at Sarito Center for the Performing Arts. City Manager, do we have a report? City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 5B is an update regarding performances that are planned for the upcoming 25-26 season of the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. The presentation this evening will be given by Theater Executive Director Jeff Tilke, and a presentation includes a video as well. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, staff has prepared a special video previewing some of the exciting and world-class performances coming to CCPA next season. With that, I would call upon my colleague to present the video for your review and enjoyment. Thank you, Drew. A list of these performances and more are available on the CCPA website tomorrow and over the weekend. Website is cerritoscenter.com. That's the common website, or ccpa.cerritos.gov. Cerritos residents will have the exclusive pre-sale opportunity to purchase tickets early ahead of the general public on April 1st, that's next week, for a select block of shows, and sales to the general public will begin on Friday, April 4th. Tickets may be purchased online or at the CCPA box office windows, and additional performances will be announced in the coming months and throughout the season. This concludes our report on this item, and we'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Do my council colleagues have any questions for Jeff?
I just want to say thank you, Jeff. That's an amazing lineup. I'm gonna get on my phone on Ticketmaster and start buying my tickets tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah. Can't see it, so, Mark. Mark, Councilmember Palito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff and the whole team that helped make this possible, I thank you. And not just on behalf of myself, but a lot of people who have been asking for talent of that caliber. And I think this is a big indication that it's a brand-new day at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. So bravo, and I'm looking forward to buying my tickets, too.
That's it.
Councilmember Say?
Thank you so much. It's so wonderful that I did this preview for us tonight to watch. Can, outside the resident, can I also watch the preview? Because it's really attracted people.
Yes, the preview will be available online, and it's also going to be linked in an email that will be distributed to all of CCPA's 105,000 subscribers on email. So if you're not a subscriber, we suggest signing up on our website, and you'll get the first email and link to that video.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hong?
Hi, Jeff. Thank you so much for doing all this. I'm so proud of you that you're trying to improve all this. We have a beautiful CCPA, and I always have been questioned by other friends, like from Irvine, like, what's going on with your Cerritos, you know? And I say, I'm so proud. I can tell them, hey, we have a great theater, and we have a great program. And thank you so much, and thank you to all your teams, how working. We're gonna turn this around, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Great work. Item 6, Public Comments. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or conduct that disrupts the conduct of the city, of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order af- and restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. The mayor, I, will open public comments at the appropriate time on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the City Council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda Item 6, Public Comments, should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda, but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Prior to the meeting, the City Council received full-text, unredacted copies of one written comment submitted by the deadline for Item 6. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the Office of the City Clerk during regular business hours. This concludes the public comment information, and we will now open the meeting to public comments under Item 6. I'll call on Teddy Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor and the new City Council, first of all, I want to congratulate the new mayor and the new Mayor Pro Tem, and not to mention three new City Council members. Congratulations. I'm very happy to get a chance to meet all of you. Too bad we, City residents, cannot vote for the City Mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, and otherwise, I would definitely vote for our new Mayor Frank and then Mayor Pro Tem Linda. Okay, as you probably know, I have come to Cerritos multiple times, even in recent years, because I am really pushing for our city. The city of Cerritos is by far the best city started with pickleball. I know, pickleball what? Okay. And because to begin with, it began at Liberty Park. And then Liberty Park, it started to expand. Pickleball went from two to three and three to five. So we, not myself, again, I'm representing many, many Cerritos residents, and then also people play pickleball. We'd like to see the city to expand on that. And I do know recently that the City Council, looking at maybe wait until our new City Mayor and the new City Council, will be discussing perhaps expanding, and then one possibility is at the, with the County of Los Angeles, the Don Quinobe Regional Park. So the way I look at it, it's that this is the lowest cost would be, rather than, let's say, build some new ones, okay? So my suggestion is that perhaps work with the County of Los Angeles, especially, the city of Cerritos has a sports complex. If you look closely, the sports complex is essentially where the Don Quinobe Regional Park is, but divided by the power lines. However, if you look closely, the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, they don't belong to the city of Cerritos. And many people go there, and then even the residents always get confused. Is that the cities or is that the counties? And then I just discovered that the county does not even manage that, hire a separate company called iTennis iPickle, which has nothing to do with the city and then the county. So I heard that one reason given was the fact that the county feels that they may not have enough staff, or they may not, because the county apparently manages something like about 60 or 70 parks. But funny thing is, is that the Don Quinobe Regional Park, other than the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, the rest is all managed by the city of Cerritos, the sports complex, which you can find easy. There's a sign. It says, "Cerritos Sports Complex." And then two signs says that the County of Los Angeles, Don Quinobe Regional Park. And then the office of the county is located right by where the gymnasium is, okay? So if that's the case, why not work with the county? And if the county does not really want to, why not let the city of Cerritos take over those tennis courts and pickleball courts? This way, the city will not have to build any new or convert any tennis courts. And I do think that's a great idea. And then I believe, you know, someone suggested that, and then I am seriously hoping that the city of Cerritos now pursue that. And then I would be more than happy to provide my advice or something to work with the city on that, because it is a quick and a low-cost option. And furthermore, I do know that the high school, okay, Winnie High School even uses that for the tennis team. In fact, I met several of the tennis players commenting, they say, hey, yeah, we would like to see more pickleball courts, okay? So that being the case, I definitely think that this is a golden opportunity for the city of Cerritos, and especially with Parks and Recreation Department, we can work on the details, and I think that would be a low cost, because other options such as at the CPE, such as these others, almost always involving the cost of tearing the land and rebuilding it, and then examples of such can be seen at La Palmer. La Palmer Central Park has a tennis court, and they easily made it into four pickleball courts. And but La Palmer has only two tennis courts, but that, at the Don Quinobe, it's got 14 tennis courts, two already converted into pickleball, into 10 pickleball courts. So as a result of that, I hope the city of Cerritos now would seriously consider that option, and then perhaps we can turn that into a great pickleball courts. So many, you know, Cerritos residents would like to have that. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Joe Pack?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. My name is Joe Pack. I'm Senior Field Rep for Assemblyman Sharon Cook Silva. I just want to make a short announcement. There will be an invitation-only event recognizing women of distinction this Saturday, and one of you is sitting on the dice. That's Mayor Pro Tem Linda Johnson. Congratulations. And another Cerritos resident is Norma Williamson. So two of them will be recognized as women of distinction for Assembly District 67 on Saturday. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Linda. Mel Cortez?
Good evening. Congratulations, Ms. Jennifer Hong, Ms. Sofia Se, Mr. Mar Palito. Welcome back. My first line here was, please change comments back to five minutes. So thank you for reading my mind. Home break-ins. I think in January, we had 27, February 20. And based on the reports this month, what, today's the 27th, March 27th? I think so far, we had seven. That's really good news for, from our deputies helping and for residents of the city. So seven home break-ins, as far as I know from crime mapping. So those are good news. Thank you. I saw today on Cerritos Sheriff's Facebook, and thank you, because they've been updating a lot more on Facebook. So social media actually gives us all the good news, and we want to hear more of that. That a stolen car was caught today, or I'm not sure when, yesterday, but it was caught from the automatic license plate readers. And that's really good. That's why we've been asking, and actually, the city's been listening, to install more license plate readers. This one, I'm not sure if it was in Cerritos, because this is clearly Artesia. I think that one belongs to Artesia, but it's Cerritos. I'm not sure how it happened, but it says, it said the Cerritos deputies were the ones that caught him. That's near my home. Thank you. So Phase 1 was already installed around the mall, license plate readers. Phase 2 hasn't, they haven't been installed yet. I think it's been delayed. We thought it'd be in February, and they still haven't been installed. And Phase 3 was supposed to be for next fiscal year. So that's at least until July, and might be even later on. But if something could be done to be, to buy them sooner and install them sooner, it'd be great, because 166 and Artesia Boulevard, 166 and Sudebaker, allow the cars that come into my neighborhood, that's the getaway. That's the getaway from that side, and we miss them. So if it could be done sooner, license plate readers, it would be great. Some of the good news that I saw on the Cerritos Sheriff's Facebook, they got, they stopped a car based on the license plate that was not matching, and they arrested four people that had all the tools that are used to the home break-ins. Thank you also, because that's something that's, they probably saved about three or four homes for that week from those people coming into our neighborhood. Thank you. So we want to, we like to hear all the good news. Thank you. That it's been, it's been a lot, it's been a good month for residents, a lot of good news, and hopefully, we'll keep doing that. And the more cars are stopped for license plates, for dark tint, the more this, these people are gonna start coming to our neighborhood. The news are gonna get, we do them, and say, no, they'll stop you in Cerritos. If you had dark tint, they'll stop you. You better go somewhere else. If your license plate is not the right one, they'll catch you. So hopefully, it's like they were watching. The more we do that, the more they'll go somewhere else. That's on crime. On CCPA, I brought this a long time ago, so I'm just, hopefully, hopefully eventually this will happen, but we want more residents to attend. A long time ago, I brought this idea, maybe a discount to residents, 5%, 2%, something. Reward residents for attending, or our theater. So it's an idea. I have more ideas for the future, but if this belongs to the city, reward residents a little bit for attending the performances. All right? Thank you very much, and have a great year, everybody. Thank you.
Deanna, Deanna K. Allen?
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Deanna A. I live in the area across from Liberty Park, bound by 195th and South. I'm here today because I wanted to give a shout-out to our Cerritos Sheriff's Station. Captain Drew, we came here with high demands, and you and your team are rising to the occasion. So thank you. Know that we see you, and we are grateful. To the council, soon you're gonna hear that our request for street closure is being retracted. Suzie will elaborate on that later. We feel that the license plate reader cameras that Daryl has installed is working. We have not had any recent incidents since that occurred, and we want more of them. Today, the city of Lakewood announced that it would be installing 58 additional flood cameras throughout its city. flood cameras throughout its city. There are also big new neighborhood watch banners lining the street down Del Amo. The city of Cerritos should grant us our request. Please invest these strategically near your residents, and not just near our commercial areas, so that we can keep these residential burglars at bay. Thank you.
Carl Seitz.
Good evening. My name is Carl Seitz. I own a building, a commercial building on the corner of 166th Street and Parkside. I share something with the council and with everyone sitting behind me. I want clean streets and no more graffiti. I have been working for the last year on trying to get the street in front of my building clean, and to get graffiti off of a block wall that I have. This is my building. It's a nice building. But on a regular basis, my street in front of the building is not clean. And the reason for that is, one, the city of Cerritos's street cleaners don't recognize that my building is in the city of Cerritos. They believe it's in Norwalk, and they don't clean it, okay? And I have to call up on a regular basis to get it cleaned. The other reason that it doesn't get cleaned is because there is no sign that says that street cleaning is on Tuesday. Now, Daryl over here has been working tirelessly with me to help on this project, but to no avail. I still get people who park even though the sidewalk, the curb is painted red. The sheriff never comes out and cites. The city of Norwalk, who is right next door to me, has a sign that says, no parking on street cleaning day. This is their sign. Nice and clear. I asked that a sign be put up similar to this, and Daryl helped me, and I didn't get one sign, I got two signs. Here they are. Anyone can tell me how that helps with street cleaning? All I'm asking for is to put up a reasonable sign that says, no parking on street cleaning day. That should not take a year, but it has. The second item is something that Daryl and I have been working on for the last six months, and he has been working on tirelessly with me, okay? And that is graffiti. I and my neighbors on that street have the worst graffiti in the city. Think about what the worst graffiti is. I'll give you a second. That's what my building looks like. Are you ready? This can be your house or your building one day. Graffiti is a cancer. It starts with one building, then two buildings, then three buildings. Look at Los Angeles, it's an armpit. Once it starts, give it up. I asked, I have a block wall that gets graffitied on a regular basis, twenty times in the last eight or nine years. And I had asked, and Daryl has helped me, and even the city manager has helped me, although he may not know me. The city manager, I believe, said, I tell you what, we'll cut an eighteen-inch strip along this wall, this block wall, and put a planter in there, and put bushes in there so that people don't graffiti this wall, okay? This is the wall, and all I'm asking for is a lousy eighteen inches. Watch, that's eighteen inches, okay? Daryl has been working tirelessly on it for the last six months, and each time I call him, he says, we're working on it. Last week, he called up and said, Carl, it's been denied. You know why? Because it is, here it is, here it is. This is an irrigation ditch, and therefore I cannot have a planter, and it was denied by the building permit people, okay? Even though not thirty feet away is a drain to the, to the, to the gutter out front, that irrigation ditch, the building permit people went back forty years.
Mr. Seitz, Mr. Seitz, thank you. Your five minutes have passed, do you want to wrap it up?
Thank you. All I'm asking for is that the building permit people allow me to have an eighteen-inch planter so that I can put up plants so that we don't have graffiti anymore.
Mr. Seitz, can you please talk to us, please?
Pardon?
Can you please talk to us, please?
Yeah, okay. So, two things. Can I have a decent sign that says, no parking on, on street cleaning day, just like Norwalk has, instead of this thing that not even the sheriff can, can understand what it means? And can I have the building permit people allow me to have an eighteen-inch planter put in so that we can put up plants? Daryl has been very good, he said, we will landscape it, we will pay for it. I mean, this was something that the city initiated, I didn't initiate it, the city initiated, and the city cannot even approve their own permit. It's sad. I will leave this here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seitz. Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Celia Spitzer.
I've been smiling a lot the last couple of days. Congratulations from Howard and me, two new council members, Polito Se and Hong, and huge congratulations to Mayor Protem Johnson and Mayor Yokiyama. Wow, that sure sounds good. Last night's swearing-in festivities and reception were amazing. Before I go on, a little bit of history. As my husband and I were eating dinner tonight, he reminded me about my running for council in nineteen seventy-eight, and at that time, there had been no women council members. That year, both Diana Needham and I ran as part of a field, I believe it was thirteen candidates. While I did not win, Diana did and became the first woman on the Cerritos City Council. The night of this, our election last month, earlier this month, when it was pretty obvious who the three winners were, I realized, as others stated last night, that for the first time, a majority of our council would be women. How exciting. And how wonderful for me on a personal level when I realized that three former ABC School Board members, Linda Sophia and Mark, would now be on the council. I am very excited about that, as I know them very well, having had the privilege of serving with them for a variety, variety of years during my sixteen years as an ABC School Board member. I know that all of you will work together to make the best and well-thought-out decisions for our wonderful city. Thank you, and welcome up there. And I'm not sure, and Kimberly wasn't, I also want to speak on seven C, but I don't know if you're going to pull it, or I should address that now.
Well, we'll see what the council wants to do when we get the consent calendar, so I'd like you to wait.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and nice sweater. Go Bears. Pat, Pat Patnaik.
My name is, can you hear me? My name is Pat Patnaik, Commissioner, Parks and Recreation. First of all, hearty congratulations to all of y'all. Good to see you, Frank, as mayor. Good to see you in a suit, great tie. Congratulations, Linda Johnson, Jennifer Hong, and my friend Mark Polito, and Sofia Se. I think last night was a wonderful evening, and thank you to the staff for putting a spectacular program at the CCPA, well-attended by seven hundred people. But, you know, we all think inwardly, right? We think about the city, we think about the parks, we think about all the senior centers, wellness centers, but I think we should really start thinking something beyond, beyond just our city. One of the things that kind of dawned in me is the Olympics, which is about three years from now, you know, in two thousand twenty-eight. And I always say, Los Angeles is going to be the, is the next sporting destination. We got the soccer coming in less than two years, we got the Super Bowl, and then we have the Olympics. Now, what a great thing it will be for our city to kind of flange up with the Olympic Committee. Because in nineteen eighty-four, we had extended some of our facilities for training purposes, you know, the swim center, I know, I remember that in nineteen eighty-four, that was forty years ago. The swimmers came and practiced at the, at, at the swim center as such. Being that, city of Cerritos is in the confluence of some major freeways, you know, what better city can there be to be like a, aligned with the Olympic Committee as such, right? And doing something at our end, maybe we have all these beautiful grounds, beautiful facilities, that could be rendered for practice purposes, and surely we'll be on the map, in the world map as such. So my appeal to the Honorable Mayor Frank Yokiyama is to kind of have some kind of a committee as such that could interface with the Olympic Committee as such. So that's my request. Thank you very much, and again, I wish you all the best. I know that you guys will endure the best for the city and for the residents. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Patnaik. Kirat Chahhan.
Good evening, Mayor Yokiyama. Linda, nice to see you in that position, and the council members, all of you, I've kind of known by being in the city. Yesterday was a day of celebration. Today's the day when you actually get back to work. We as residents, as you know, are not shy about asking for things, and we won't be. But in our life, there are needs and there are wants. Yesterday, I was at the CCPA, and I think Mr. Kakar made a comment, and I should have known, I'm an educator. How are we accommodating individuals who have disabilities? How are we complying with ADA? So here is this video, it is being streamed right now on YouTube. There are tools embedded within, so it can be converted from voice to text. Why don't we utilize those technologies? May I suggest that the council invest in five devices, install them in the back, connect them to your network? I'm sure you have wonderful technicians here. Explore the possibilities of how we can comply with ADA requirements. Second, that CCPA is awesome. I came from England a long time ago. UB40 is something I understand. They're a band out of Birmingham, and if you don't know the music, it's Red Red Wine, and my favorite would be Kingston Town. Have a nice day.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you, Kirat. Ananta Ramachandran.
Good evening, honorable council members, good evening, Mayor Yokiyama, and welcome to the new council. So yesterday was celebration, like Kirat said, today is business. So I have a request which Mayor Yokiyama, I know he fought for it, and Protem Mayor also fought for it in the last council, which is the diabolical scheme that was perpetrated by the last council with Measure J. How they moved the election from the general cycle to the off-cycle, and then turned around, diabolically put a measure which no one understood, the city, no one in the city understood what it meant. Because on paper, Measure J looked like a noble cause, that is, the council will no more have the rights to change the election dates, and it can be done only through the people's participation. But before doing that, like fast backward, not fast forward, fast backward, couple of months back, they moved the election from the general cycle to the off-cycle, and in spite of Mayor Protem Linda Johnson and Mayor Yokiyama mounting a vehement fight, it did not get through, because those three, three majority, yesterday someone was calling them something, I don't want to call it here, but those three majorities saw to that it never happened. So I want this council, I request this council, I implore this council, in the name of democracy, please undo that travesty. In this November election, please make a ballot measure that would move our election back to the general cycle, so that we can actually reverse the diabolical scheme. See, they moved the election back, but they also moved, got the Measure J passed, but now if we move the election back to the general cycle, then the next election change date can only happen through a ballot measure, and I don't think no citizen will vote for an election that will move from general to the off-cycle. That's not going to happen once this gets, so I request the council to take it up, and I know it's Mayor Yokiyama's and Protem Mayor Linda's desire too, I'm hoping it is their wish too, and hopefully this council will get it done. So thank you very much, and congratulations, best of luck, and we are looking for great things from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ananta. Elizabeth Boudreau.
I want to thank you for listening and acting on our concerns about safety and insecurity in our neighborhoods. I started coming to these meetings feeling very vulnerable, unsafe, and frustrated. And even in this room, after speaking up and listening to responses, I felt disregarded and dismissed. I'm just saying how I felt. I'm not implying that that's what it was done, but just how I felt. But a lot has changed, let me find my word here. The, the work that we have seen in our neighborhoods with the sheriff and safety has improved, it has made me, it has put me more at ease, and I've, I know that we are being listened to. And part of that is also, I'm going to speak for our community, where I live, the neighbors, we, the neighbors have been very active about pressing and the point about that we need work done, and also coming up with ideas and other measures and things that can be done. And they're listening, you guys have been listening, and the new staff, I know they will too. Congratulations. they will too, congratulations on your new, your new, your new jobs. And so, I look forward to continue to come to these meetings and learn and improve our endeavors. My neighbors are improving their endeavors, I along with them, and I really trust and hope that the staff and the councilmen and everyone here too, can give us a good measure of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no, no other speakers on the list, would anybody else in the chamber like to speak at public comment? Okay, so seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. The next item is the consent calendar. Do I have any, anything from any of my colleagues regarding the consent calendar?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7C from the consent calendar to be discussed and voted separately.
Do I have anything else from any of the council? Okay, Councilmember Polito?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have a clarifying question regarding approval of the minutes on 7A and 7, 7A1 and 7A2, since I and two other council members are just newly seated and weren't present at these meetings, should we abstain?
I will speak to that, thank you Councilmember Polito. The question about whether to abstain or to vote on the minutes that you did not attend are dependent on whether you either were in the audience or reviewed a recording or a transcript of the meeting minutes, not that you necessarily agreed, but you want to make sure that they're accurate. So even though you weren't on the council, if you did review a video, if you looked at transcripts, or if you were present in the audience during either of the two meetings, you can go ahead and vote. Otherwise, I would recommend that you abstain from voting on, on either one of these minutes.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, so, based on your advice as the city attorney, let's also remove item 7A.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes.
Sorry.
Councilmember Se.
Thank you. 7A, I did watch the video, and 7A1, I watched the video, but 7A2, I didn't get a chance to complete it, so.
Okay, so let's remove 7A1 and 7A2, let's also remove 7C, and we will hear those three items separately from the consent calendar. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Yes, motion to approve...
The remaining items?
The remaining items of 7D.
Second by Sofia, do you need a second?
And also 7B.
Oh, and 7B and 7D.
So your, sorry Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, your motions to approve item 7B and 7D of the consent calendar? Do I have a second?
Sofia for a second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Polito? Councilmember Se?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Yokoyama?
Yes.
Motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Okay, could we please vote on item 7A1? Do the, my colleagues have any questions about item 7A1, approval of minutes of the March 13, 2025 regular meeting? Do I have any questions? Do I have to ask for public comment on, on this, or did the public comment from item seven, from item six cover this?
I didn't see any speakers, but you can go ahead and ask if there are any public comments for each individual item.
Is there any public comment for item 7A1? Approval of the minutes of the March 13 meeting? I don't see any, any public comment. So can we please vote on item 7A1 on our screens?
And was there a motion to approve Mayor?
Oh, thank you. Is, do I have a motion from my colleagues?
Motion to approve 7A1.
Second by Sofia.
Okay.
I believe, and the motion passes on a vote of three to zero with two abstentions.
Okay, thank you. Could we move on to item 7A2? Do I have any questions from my colleagues regarding item 7A2 of the consent calendar? Do I have any public comment? Is there anybody who'd like to make public comment on item 7A2? Approval of the minutes of the March 19 City Council Special Meeting Minutes? Okay, bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion regarding item 7A2?
Yes, motion to approve 7...
Do I have a second?
Second by Sofia.
Okay, can we please vote?
And the motion passes on a vote of two, two zero with three abstentions.
Okay, now let's move on to item 7C. Could we please have a staff report on item 7C?
Yes, thank you, good evening Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 7C is a second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at a prior meeting. Brief overview of this item will be given by Deputy City Manager Ryan Carey, and following that, he and I and other members of the team are available to answer questions.
Thank you Mr. Lopez, good evening Mayor, members of the City Council. As Robert mentioned, the item before you this evening is the second reading of a proposed municipal code amendment that was presented to the council at the meeting of March 14th. The amendment was prepared in accordance with City Council direction to align the municipal code with the recently adopted Boards, Commissions, and Committees handbook. As you may recall, the handbook was developed to provide BCC members with guidance on policies and best practices, and the handbook also provided recommendations for the addition of new advisory bodies and the modification of some existing bodies. The council approved the BCC handbook on February 13th. Given the recommendations adopted within that handbook, a number of municipal code amendments were subsequently necessary to ensure that the handbook and municipal code were aligned. The ordinance before you accomplishes that alignment by codifying and implementing the relevant provisions of the BCC handbook within the code. Approval of the item this evening will commence the implementation of the ordinance and all associated incorporating actions. This concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Ryan. Does, do any of my colleagues have any questions? Do any of my colleagues have any questions about item 7C? I will call for public comment on item 7C. Anybody have any public comment? Okay, I see Celia Spitzer in the UC Berkeley sweater. Will be giving some public comment.
Good evening again. I'm here regarding action involving the recently adopted BCC handbook. For the new council members, this will be your first time addressing this item. I think the handbook is a good idea, and I've given a great deal of input to it and have worked with Ryan, including many suggested changes, and most of those have been made. However, I still have some other suggestions, but it is up to all of you to suggest revisions and bring it back for future consideration. I do want to however, once again, and I sound like a broken record, state that changing the property preservation identity or identification from commission to board does not reflect its functions. A board is defined as, and a quote, "an official group of persons who direct or supervise some activity," unquote, while a commission is defined as "a group of persons authoritatively charged with particular functions." The latter, more accurately, really describes what property preservation does. Actually, board better applies to the planning commission, however, I do not recommend that either. Bottom line, both bodies need to have the same label, and it should be commission. Please, so that all got adopted and passed, and then at the last meeting, it now things have to go in the municipal code, and I got up, I've spoken in February, I've spoken the last meeting, and asked the council at that point to just table this and let the new council read this, talk about it, and discuss it, because they're gone and you're here. So, again, please table this item to some future date, when all of you will have had the time to read the handbook, discuss its contents in full at a future meeting, and then decide if it is even necessary and what its content should be. When you have done so, then it can be brought back for inclusion in the municipal code if you so determine. Thank you.
Thank you Celia Spitzer. Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, do my colleagues have any comments? Okay Jennifer, Councilmember Hong.
Thank you Mayor. I haven't had a chance to really look into the handbook, and that's why I think that was a good suggestion that we really have to look into it, because I believe there reasons why they approve it, but maybe there are downsides of it, so I would like to spend more time and do further study, so I can make more wise decision about this. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember, okay, I'll call on Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. The mayor and I both rejected the adoption of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees handbook at the February 13th meeting, and on the March 13th meeting, we also voted against the introduction of an ordinance that would amend various chapters of our municipal code. This handbook and these ordinances were adopted by a majority of the previous council, who knowingly voted on a handbook that would not affect them. When it's appropriate, I do have a motion.
Councilmember Mark Polito?
Thank you, thank you Mr. Mayor. So staff could walk me through this. This is the second reading, and the first reading was at the February 13th meeting, correct?
It was March 14th, the, the, the first meeting of March.
March 14th?
Yeah. 13th, sorry.
So, so after the, the last municipal election?
Correct.
And they took action as they were leaving the building? And it was a unanimous vote, or was it a split vote?
Split vote, as Mayor Pro Tem Johnson indicated.
And the dissenting council members, are they here or are they not here?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem were the dissenting votes.
And there are three new members who haven't had a chance to go through the process of doing their due diligence in order to vote on this? To codify it?
That's correct.
Sounds absurd, so I'm going to vote against this. That's all.
Councilmember Se.
Thank you Mr. Ryan. Me too, I feel the same thing. First of all, I did read it, I read it after our clerk told me about it, so I read the whole thing, I also pointed people for their position too, but however, there's some background behind that, I'm not quite sure I really understand, just based what I read, kind of services directly with the residents, with the community, but however, there were three to two rather than all in favor, so I would like to say, hey, this study again, to look into deep and see what else we can. I also see other side, we use a lot of staff time too, do we really need that, or the position there, that cause and factor that we really need to take into consideration, which one should be and which one should not be, or maybe something else can come up, based on the new council member into the position? I think I would like to postpone it, hold it until I really know more detail behind the back. Thank you. One more question, that's going to be item 9A, because that's why we're going to appoint the positions, going to be affect that item or not?
Yes, whether or not you move forward with this ordinance, that will affect item 9A because it relates to the appointments of those on the commissions, and this ordinance does establish new commissions.
So that?
So if you pull this, those two commissions will not be in effect, or would not be in effect until you vote on the ordinance.
Also where the position was opposed out there, people are apply the position already, all the position. Am I right? It's posted already there. Thank you.
Thank you, do any of my colleagues have any additional comments regarding item 7C? Okay, so, my thoughts on this are, yes, it, it has been said, and I'll say it again, that this handbook was not the right thing to do, not the right thing to do at this time, as the three council members who supported this were walking, were walking out of the city council, as they were leaving, leaving the city council. And as pointed out by my colleague, Councilmember Polito, they voted to approve this ordinance on March 13, nine days after the city election. And with the goal of imposing rules on future city council members and their appointees, these, this handbook would not affect in any way those council members or any of their appointees who were leaving their, their, their appointments on commissions and committees. What, what I don't understand, and I'll bring it up, is we're sitting here today, this council, to consider item 7C, which is the second reading of this ordinance. This ordinance has not been passed, this ordinance is before this council to whether or not to make this law, to make this City of Cerritos, an ordinance of the City of Cerritos Municipal Code. Laws that would apply to the residents and to the city council, but it has not passed yet. This is the second reading, that's why I'm, I'm, you know, I apologize to the audience, I don't know why the appointment application that was disseminated to the public reflected the commissions and committees in the handbook, when the ordinance wasn't even passed yet. We're all here, hearing item 7C, which is the second reading of this proposed ordinance on whether or not to make this law. I wish all of you, or I wish the public had the opportunity to fill out an application that reflected the commissions and committees when this matter was settled, when it was a final, there was finality. Unfortunately, the application reflected commissions and committees that have not been made a part of the municipal code. Moving on. You know, I, I pointed this out at the previous, a previous city council meeting, when we were considering a similar document, the City of Cerritos Protocol, the Cerritos City Council Protocol Manual, okay? The Cerritos City Council Protocol Manual says, and I pointed this out at the meeting, because the, the other three council members, Bruce Barrows, Narasalanki, and Chang Vo, who are not here anymore, they left the city council. Another thing that they did by a three to two vote, with Linda and I voting no, is they made significant changes to the Cerritos City Council Protocol Manual, a document that tells the Cerritos City Council how to do their job. And they passed it as they were leaving, so that those, that revision doesn't apply to them, it only applies to us five who are on the city council. They passed revisions to... They passed revisions to the protocol manual as they were leaving to tell us five how to do our job. And when I spoke out against that agenda item, I brought up the language from the specific language in the protocol manual, item 9.01, and it says, "The city council will specifically review and if necessary revise the protocol manual every April following a city council election." Even the very document says by its own express language, "The right time to consider these manuals and handbooks is when the new council is in place, not when an old council is walking out the door." So that's what they did with the handbook. That's what Bruce Barrows, Narasalanki, and Chong Vo did with the handbook and the protocol manual. They passed the handbook and they passed the significant revisions to the protocol manual as they were leaving the council because they wanted to tell these five council members how to do their job, and they wanted to tell all of our appointees how to do their job. And for example, the revisions to the protocol manual. The original protocol manual before they made their changes was 61 pages. After the agenda item we had just a few meetings ago that passed by a vote of three to two, Linda and I voting no, it went from 61 pages to 142 pages. So I feel exactly the same way that Councilmember Polito said about the handbook, I feel that same way about the protocol manual. And furthermore, the author of the handbook and the author of the revisions to the protocol manual that changed it from a 61-page protocol manual to a 142-page protocol manual, Bruce Barrows wasn't even elected by the residents of Cerritos. The five of us up here were elected by the residents of Cerritos in a municipal election. Congratulations to Jennifer and Sophia and Mark getting elected most recently in the March 4, 2025 election. You have a mandate from the people to serve the residents of Cerritos, and I value your opinions on a handbook or a protocol manual that will be, that will be a transparent document, that we will tell the residents what they can expect from us and our appointees on how we're gonna perform our duties. Conversely, Bruce Barrows wasn't elected, and he does not have that mandate from the people to tell the five of us how to do our jobs and to tell all of our, all of our appointees how to do their jobs. That's why the protocol manual, section 9.01 expressly says, "The right time to consider, review, and revision of documents like the protocol manual or the handbook is every April following a city council election." That's why I am asking for consensus of my colleagues that we, for purposes, we're in, we're in item 7C. So I will be making a request for consensus when we get to item 9A regarding appointments. But for purposes of item 7C, which arises out of the handbook, I am instructing the city manager to agendize for the April 10 city council meeting, agendize the city council's review, the city council's consideration to rescind the handbook.
Is that a council consensus?
No, I'm agendizing it. So please agendize for the April 10 meeting, the city council's consideration to rescind the handbook. And then, in my mayoral appointments, you know, I will appoint my colleagues, two of them, to the ad hoc working groups so that the, the members of the ad hoc working group, and then eventually this city council can consider and draft and submit at a city council meeting for approval, a protocol manual and a handbook that we present for the, the public to know how we will serve them as a city council and how our appointees will serve as appointed officials of the city of Cerritos. Do I have a motion on item 7C?
I have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
My motion is to oppose the adoption of ordinance 1049, an ordinance of the city of Cerritos amending various chapters of the Cerritos Municipal Code, including titles 2, 6, and 22, and to not implement updates to the city's appointed boards, commissions, and committees.
Do I have a second?
Sophia, second.
Did you, did you get that, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have a motion on the floor made by Mayor Protem Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Say to not adopt the ordinance to implement changes to the municipal code as related to the board's commissions and committees.
Okay, so, so this is a motion to not adopt the ordinance?
Correct. In other words, it's denial the second reading.
An electronic voting is activated. If councilmembers could please vote.
Councilmember Hong, do you, do you have a question?
I think I need to clarify this point because I am a little bit confused about this point. You say, "We denied it," or are we gonna go further study about this one? Or if we voted to deny it, that means we're going back to the original, or we're just going to extend it in time to re-study and revise it, or what?
This item is specifically for the ordinance to amend the code that establishes two new commissions based on the BCC handbook that was adopted previously in February. So if you don't move forward with the ordinance tonight, in other words, to deny it, that means you're not creating the two additional commissions. And the ordinance that is currently in the municipal code will stand. So we will maintain status quo if this is denied.
And how much time they spend on discussion about this to, to amend the handbook? Do you have any idea, one meeting or how long was the procedure? I'm just saying that we spent so much time and doing on that, we just don't have a chance to really study it, and we're just gonna deny it?
I don't recall how much staff time was spent on it. It was a lot. There was a committee that studied the handbook as well as the ordinance amendment. It was a lot of staff time. There were at least two meetings that were discussed, I would say three, I believe. But there is additional discussion to be had at the, the next item up for the agenda 9A as well as 9B, that will talk more about the BCC handbook as well as the protocol manual.
I see, thank you.
This is just the ordinance provision at this moment. If there are no, okay, go ahead. And the motion passes on a vote of four to one.
And Mayor, may I please, just for clarification regarding the agenda, agendizing for an item at the April 10th meeting, is that the city council protocol manual or is it the BCC handbook?
It is the handbook.
For the board's commissions, committees, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8, public hearings, there are no hearings on tonight's agenda. Let's move to new and old business. The next item is item 9A. City Manager, do we have a report on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 9A relates to the appointment of advisory board members. The overview of this item will be presented by City Clerk Cindy Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. In the spirit of encouraging and inviting participation and input of Cerritos residents, the city has established various boards, commissions, and committees, or advisory boards. The advisory boards apprise the city council on various subject matters within the city's jurisdiction and serve as liaisons to the community. The city's current advisory boards include the Fine Arts and Historical Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Property Preservation Commission, Community Safety Committee, and the Let Freedom Ring Committee with a total of 40 member positions. Current member terms end March 31st. However, pursuant to the Cerritos Municipal Code, each member may serve for an additional period of up to 90 days until their successors are appointed. This provides for continuity of operations on the advisory boards. On April 13, the city council adopted the Board's Commissions and Committees Handbook, which will now be brought forth for additional review and consideration. And this evening, as we just reviewed, there was an agenda item related to the adoption of an ordinance implementing certain changes brought forth by the BCC handbook. As this ordinance has not been adopted, the modifications displayed on the screen will not be implemented, including the establishment of two new committees, the Disability Advisory Committee and the Senior Services Committee, and the bifurcation of the Fine Arts and Historical Commission into the Fine Arts Commission and Historical Committee, and finally, the renaming of the Property Preservation Commission to the Property Preservation Board. Additionally, this ordinance would have provided modified or established meeting schedules for each of the advisory boards, which will also not be implemented at this time. Given council's direction this evening, only appointments to existing advisory boards should be made this evening. I will note, however, there are certain amendments implemented solely by the BCC handbook not requiring the adoption of the implementing ordinance. These amendments include that in order to be eligible to serve an advisory board, a person must not only be a Cerritos resident, but must also be a registered voter, and for the Senior Services Committee only, must be age 50 or older, which that is now not under consideration at this time. And the BCC handbook also requires that service on an advisory board would begin only after a completion of all required trainings and filings, and sets forth a standardized provision of honoraria. Each council member appoints one member to each five-member body and two members to each 10-member body. Each appointment is subject to majority city council approval. Each council member must be mindful of the city's anti-nepotism law set forth by a voter adopted city charter amendment in 2022. Specifically, neither the mayor nor council members may appoint any person who is a relative within the third degree of the mayor or any council member to a city board, commission, or committee, or other advisory body. Relative within the third degree is defined as spouse, son, daughter, mother, father, brother, sister, grandchild, grandparent, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, great-grandchild, or great-grandparent. The law expressly applies to relatives by blood or marriage and half-relatives, step-relatives, and in-laws included as relatives. The law likewise expressly precludes the appointment by the mayor or a council member of another council member's relative within third degree. The city commenced advisory board recruitment with applications accepted until all positions are filled. The names of eligible applicants are included as exhibit one of the agenda report of this item. Applications for service on advisory boards are available on the city's website and in the office of the city clerk. It is staff's recommendation that the city council review and consider the information presented in this report, open public comments, and nominate individuals from the eligible pool of applicants to serve two-year terms for each advisory board, inclusive, inclusive of only of the existing advisory boards at this time, subject to the city charter anti-nepotism law and majority approval of the city council, or defer nominations to a future meeting date or provide alternate direction to staff. For appointments made this evening, to any appointees in attendance, I will administer the oath of office at the appropriate time. Our office will coordinate with members appointed this evening not in attendance to administer the oath at another time. This concludes my report, and the city manager, city attorney, and I are available to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, Cindy. Do my colleagues have any questions regarding this agenda item? Councilmember Say.
Mayor, Mayor Yukuyama, just for clarification toward tonight, are we gonna appoint, I mean, we probably have some recommendation? Do we give the recommendation, the list, according to what we post online, what we're gonna table out for as the handbook study?
So I have a question. So in, in this agenda report, thank you, City Clerk Nava, for this agenda report. You did point out on page two that there are three BCCs that are, that are unchanged by the, by the handbook. Community Safety Committee, Planning Commission, and Property Preservation, but you do point out that property preservation in the handbook was changed in name from a commission to a board. Do you and/or the city attorney, can you give us, give the city council members advice? Can we make appointments to the Community Safety Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Property Preservation Commission tonight since those are unchanged BCCs?
Yes, since they are unchanged, and even for, you know, for example, the Property Preservation Commission just changed in name, and actually, the ordinance didn't change that, so it currently is the status quo as it stands. The five commissions still exist, and so you can make appointments to those commissions.
Okay, so that's one question I had. So the handbook, the handbook that Linda and I voted against on February 13 is, is the reason we're discussing, discussing these new commissions and new committees? If, if I make a request for council consensus to waive the provisions of the handbook for purposes of this agenda item, can any council member who wants to make appointments for any of the, any of the six active advisory boards, which are the four commissions and two committees listed on the second paragraph of page one of this agenda report, can they make appointments to those six, those current six active advisory boards?
Yes, so if I understand your question correctly, you're asking if the city council can approve appointments to the commissions that are currently existing and whether requirements that are in the BCC handbook can be waived with respect to the appointments that we're discussing tonight?
Yes.
It is within the city council's purview with respect to the appointments to be able to waive one or more of the requirements for the appointments. That is your, that is within your authority and purview because that is what's listed tonight. I was part of that.
I asked my colleagues for consensus to waive the provisions of the handbook, of the BCC handbook, for purposes of agenda item 9A before us tonight.
I concur.
I concur as well.
Can I have a clarification one more time? As far as I know, you say it's a sixth position, one is the Community Safety Committee, and the Fine Arts?
They are the six.
Fine Arts Commission?
Nope. They're the six. They're the six Advisory Boards listed in the second paragraph of Page One. Page One. We're on item nine A.
Yeah, so it's, it currently is the Fine Arts and Historical Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, Property Preservation Commission, Community Safety, and Let Freedom Ring.
So we're back to what original?
Correct.
Before that correction on March 13th?
Correct. And right now, I guess the request is to waive some of the requirements that are applicable to the appointments that are currently in the handbook. For example, obviously, there's no Senior Services Committee, so that's not even there, but the registered voters are in, the completion of orientation, ethics training, and the anti-harassment training to be completed before service begins under state law. We have six months to complete the training. You have thirty days to complete the FPPC form, but you can start serving. If you want to waive those, it would fall back to the default of what state law requires.
I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, so I requested consensus. Two of my colleagues agree. Before we move on, is that, did you want? Okay, so we noted that we have Councilmember Polito, Councilmember Sei, and Mayor Protem Johnson agreed with my request for consensus. Is there any public comment on this item? Would any members of the public like to give public comment on item nine A? Okay, bringing it back to the Council. Do any of my colleagues have any further comments or questions about item nine A?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I recall in reviewing some of the materials about requirements to be an appointee, and something really stuck out to me as kind of odd, new and odd. And I'm wondering if our recent action suspends that new and odd requirement, which was that you need to be a registered voter. Is that the case, that that does not apply now going forward?
Well, that was the intent of my request for consensus to waive the provisions of the handbook for purposes of Agenda Item Nine A. And now we'll hear from the City Attorney if my request for consensus that was passed by us, if that was one of the results. City Attorney?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Polito, for requesting clarification. That is one of the requirements that is in the BCC Handbook that was adopted previously, but it is not a state law or any other legal requirement to be a registered voter. However, it is a legal requirement to have Cerritos residency.
Any other questions, Councilmember?
I'd like to comment on that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. When I saw that, it disgusted me. Because why would we want to require someone that they have to be a registered voter? That's going to exclude the vast majority of our community who may be our permanent residents that carry green card. So in essence, what we're trying to do, I think the City Clerk said this, is to try and get a big pool of talent in order to serve, in order to do the people's business. And that one requirement, though just on the face of it, is non-threatening. But if you really look behind it, what it would do was just really shrink the pool of people who could participate in this democracy. And on that, when I saw it, it disgusted me. Because for someone to do that, and let me ask a question, who was on this ad hoc committee that put that in there? Who was that one member? Of the one-member ad hoc committee?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Polito. The Protocol Manual Ad Hoc Working Group was former Councilmember Barrows and former Mayor Protem Bo.
Why would they do that and then leave the building? I think that's a question that the residents should ask. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Council Mayor?
Councilmember Sei?
I do too, because there must be something in the background they choose to voter instead of the residents in Cerritos. What was the reason? They must make some comment on that. Do we have the records on that?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Sei. I believe that at some point, it was mentioned during the review that the intent was to attract engaged citizens, which there are other ways of being an engaged citizen, but I believe that may have been a part of the intent.
Yeah, I will point out that the city of Cerritos has forty-eight thousand residents, twelve thousand of which are not registered voters. All right, so any other comments from my colleagues? If there's no other comments, do any of my colleagues want to make any appointments tonight? Absolutely. But I'd like my colleagues to go first.
I do have a question right now, because it does affect me nominating some of the people, like we were talking about a resident or a voter. That makes difference, because there was one person really good. I want to appoint him for a certain position. Unfortunately, he's living here almost twenty-something years, but he does not have.
What we just, what was just clarified respectfully, Councilmember Sei, is we waived the provisions of the handbook by the request for consensus that you agreed to. So the handbook's requirement that the appointee be a registered voter has been waived.
Good, thank you. Now I can, okay. So then I have to change. When's the last day for them to register an application?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Sei. The recruitment is essentially ongoing. There are deadlines as related to council meetings. I mean, if you apply tomorrow, you can't appoint somebody tonight who applies tomorrow. Those are the actual deadlines, but it's ongoing until all positions are filled.
And we also can change later if there's a chance. You can move people around. Do they have a contract of the year or something, though you can move people around?
There is no contract. The council at will, may by majority approval of the City Council, may remove members.
Okay, and I can say I'm ready to appoint.
Thank you. And thank you. Good questions, Councilmember Sei. So I am requesting the City Manager and the City Clerk, as a continuing agenda item going forward, as a continuing agenda item, please always agendize, review and consideration of City Council appointments to the Cerritos Advisory Boards. As long as my council colleagues have vacancies, let's have that be a continuing agenda item. So my council colleagues can appoint, for example, on April 10, the April 10, 2025 City Council Meeting, or the April 21, 2025 Special City Council Meeting. As examples, let's make it a continuing agenda item.
Yes, and I encourage you to do so before the ninety days is up.
Okay. Which is the end of June, so we have time. So, Councilmember Sei, would you like to make your appointments?
And another question, can we also appoint an alternate, or you don't do alternate here? No alternate? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to nominate my Community Safety Committee. We can have two seats in there. I would like to have Vora Sargi, Daniel Kim. Versus for the Parks and Recreation, I'd like to have Alex Camargo. Planning Commission, I'll be on a two-point, Kirat Chauhan. He's still here. And Property Reservation? I have to find a way to put it. I will be have Ann Robles. Community Safety Committee? I pointed already, right? Yes, I did. And then Letter of Freedom Ring, I would like to have Hu Yuen, Joseph Sahi. One more. I think I covered that. Fine Arts, I would like to have Rosie Peters. I think I got five points right there. Thank you. That'll be mine.
Did you get that? Madam City Clerk, do you have any questions for the Council, for the Councilmember Sei?
Do you need a paper? For the record, would the City Clerk be able to read those again?
And we have appointed to Community Safety Committee Daniel Kim, or nominated for appointment, excuse me, and Fine Arts and Historical Commission Rosa Peters. And Let Freedom Ring Committee Hu Yuen and Joseph Sully. Parks and Recreation Commission Alex Camargo. Planning Commission Kirat Chauhan. Property Preservation Commission Ann Robles. And we have one more for Community Safety Committee. One more? No?
Community what?
Community Safety.
You have one?
Vora Sargi.
Go ahead, Maria Asp-
Vora Sargi.
Maria Figuera. I think I have Vora Sargi, though. Vora Sargi is the first one. Yeah, I have two there. Vora Sargi.
Vora Sargi and Daniel Kim. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And at this time, it would be appropriate for the Council to, for a motion and a second to approve.
Move to approves Councilmember Sofia Sei's nominations.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Motion by the Mayor Protem, a second by Councilmember Polito.
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
When do we do the oath of office for those?
At the Council's pleasure, I can, we can call up any appointees in attendance at tonight's meeting at this time, and they can come up to the presentation area if you so choose, or we can call everybody after all of the votes.
Okay, so, Councilmember Sei, why don't you meet your appoint, your successful appointees right now, and the City Clerk can give them the oath of office?
There are few people not here, but definitely, I know it's important that we must have a Planning Commission to be appointed tonight for the next week meeting, am I right? The Planning Commission.
The existing members may serve for up to ninety days. However, if you, if you're-
The might's here already, so I might just appoint him, so he can starting to work with the people together.
Absolutely.
Okay, so will Councilmember Sei's appointees please come up to get the oath of office? Sophia, Councilmember Sei, of the names that were approved, only two of them are here? Okay.
And I will note that any appointees not in attendance this evening, we will coordinate with them, and that we will administer their oath of office at another time.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the appointees, and if I may, at this time, if you will raise your right hand and say aye, and state your name.
I, Rosa Peters.
I, Kirat Chauhan.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I do.
If you have any comments?
I want to thank you to accept this position, and tonight, sincerely appreciate. I want to do the best you can, take care of the city. That's what we need. Thank you.
And Sophia, thank you so much for this opportunity into the city. I'm a process person. I like rules, I like procedures, and I will do right by the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia, for this opportunity to be part of the city, and I want to thank the Council as well. And I'm excited. I can't wait to be part and start being part of the Fine Arts Committee and the Historical. Thank you.
I also want to make one comment, because based on the website application, so I did ask a couple of people with you on my walk, and I know some of the voters really, I mean, fit the position that we offer. Unfortunately, some of the physicians are putting on hold. So I want to apologize that you came tonight, that you applied the position, as far as I was told, that everything's on hold. I want to apologize sincerely, because I do have two people came here for a certain position. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, you too, and then- Thanks. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you. Right over here on three, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to invite all my council colleagues to take photos with the new appointees. Come on. Kirat, Rosa, stay there.
We are missing one. All right, everybody, right over here on three, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Rosa, thank you. Kirat, thank you.
Councilmember Hong, would you like to make any appointments?
Yes, I do, and of course, I have to cross out some of the names from my list. But I do like to announce my appointee. It's not hundred percent fulfilled yet, but we'll do it next time. First of all, I'd like to appoint the Planning Commission is Benjamin Au, and the Fine Arts and Historical Commission Kelly Colwell, and then also the Community Safety Committee is Mike Ballinton and Jonathan Tan, and also the Parks and Recreation Commission Jose Iglesias. And I'll give this to the list, to the City Clerk. Today, we have three appointee members are here. I would like to welcome after the announcement.
If I may, I apologize. I do not have on the eligibility list yet Jose Iglesias, but that appointment may be made at
At the next time.
At the next meeting, upon review of the application submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then-
I have three here right now. You can-
So Councilmember Hong and Madam City Clerk, so what are the names and positions we are that are being nominated by Councilmember Hong right now?
Thank you, Mayor. The names that I have are appointments to Planning Commission Benjamin Au, Fine Arts and Historical Commission Kelly Colwell, and Community Safety Committee Mike Ballinton and Jonathan Tan. and Community Safety Committee Mike Ballinton and Jonathan Tan.
Correct, yes. Jonathan is not here today, but I have three.
Okay. Do I, do I have a motion for my colleagues?
I'd like to move approval of Councilmember Jennifer Hong's appointees.
Second.
Okay, could we have the vote? Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
And Councilmember Hong's appointees please come up to get the oath of office. To make the oath of office, to say the oath of office?
Congratulations to our new appointees. And if you would please raise your right hand and say aye and state your name.
Aye, Kelly Colwell.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you, congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Do one group photo and then one with each of the council member. Yes, right here. All right, everybody, on three, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. And then one of each of you with Councilmember Hong. Right over here, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, and three. Right over here, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three.
Okay, will my council colleagues please join me to take a group photo with Councilmember Hong's appointees?
All right, everybody, right over here, please. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, okay, keep on serving. Congratulations to you. Daniel, right?
Benjamin.
Oh, you're Benjamin, you're Benjamin.
So the one that wasn't here was Daniel. Benjamin. Hey, Granada Park is my stomping grounds, you know that. Granada Park is my stomping grounds. All right.
Councilmember Palito, would you like to make any appointments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very pleased to nominate the following people for the following commissions and committees. In the past, we've read a little bit about them, so I came prepared for that if folks will bear with me. Great. For the Planning Commission, I am excited to nominate Armin Reyes, retired Lieutenant Colonel of the United States Army Reserve. Armin retired as a Lieutenant Colonel in 2020 and served two deployments in support of Iraqi Freedom and a deployment in support of Operation Enduring Freedom in the Afghanistan Theater of Operation. He also retired as a union representative with United Nurses Association of California, Union of Healthcare Professionals, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, and Service Employee International Union, SEIU. He was a union representative from 1994 to 2016. He also served as a school board member with the ABC Unified School District from 1999 to 2015. He came out of retirement in 2024 and currently works for the County of Los Angeles and is a member of SEIU Local 721. Armin Reyes. I'm also honored to nominate to the Parks and Recreation Commission Kathy Sarafka De Leon. Kathy Sarafka De Leon is a lifelong Cerritos resident. She is a graduate of Whitman Elementary and Whitney High School. She is a graduate of UCLA with undergraduate degrees in history and Asian American Studies and a master's degree in library and information studies. She is a former volunteer with Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles. Kathy has worked as a public librarian for 25 years, and currently Kathy is the Director of Library, Arts, and Culture for the City of Long Beach. Kathy Sarafka De Leon. For the Property Preservation Commission, I'm honored to nominate Brian Ferrer. Brian Ferrer is deeply rooted in Cerritos and is a proud third-generation Cerritos resident. His grandparents bought their first home in Cerritos in 1980. He is a proud UC Irvine alum and a registered nurse by profession. Since 2019, Brian has been serving on the Board of Directors for the Homeowners Association where his family owns three condo units in the heart of Westwood. He was recently appointed to the ABC Unified School District Strategic Board Advisory Committee by the Honorable Tatiana Yokoyama Buie and is currently serving as its chairperson. Brian Ferrer. Next. I'm honored to nominate Matthew Scamahorn to the Fine Arts and Historical Commission. Matthew, yes. Matthew Scamahorn has been a Cerritos resident for about 25 years, his whole life. He attended Leo Elementary School, Tetslof Middle School, and Cerritos High School, and graduated in 2018. He attended UC San Diego, graduated summa cum laude in 2022 with a BA in Political Science. He is currently attending UC Irvine Law School and will be graduating in about one month. As a law student, he currently serves as the Chair of the 2025 UC Irvine Law moot court competition. As a law student, he has dedicated more than 120 hours to pro bono legal work across California. He will begin his career as an employment attorney protecting the rights of workers. Most importantly, the son, Matthew is the son of Dean Scamahorn and Lisa Matia Scamahorn, and the proud older brother of Ryan Scamahorn and Mia Scamahorn. Ladies and gentlemen, Matthew Scamahorn. Honored to nominate Romel De Leon for the Community Safety Committee. Romel De Leon's family moved to Cerritos in the 1970s when the town center and much of the area was still dairy industry. He learned to swim at Regional Park in Cerritos Park East, learned to ride a bike in the Green Belt of Granada Park. In the 1980s, he frequented the mall, parks, and the library as social, educational, economic, recreational, and cultural centers of the city. Although he did not attend ABC schools, he attended many functions and events at GARR, Cerritos, and Whitney as many of his friends, with many of his friends, many of whom are still friends to this day. He worked at Fedco as a high school senior. He earned a UCLA bachelor's degree in mathematics and economics with a specialization in Asian American Studies. He was a substitute teacher for the ABC Unified School District for a year and has served as an educator for the Los Angeles Unified School District for nearly three decades. Romel is currently in a master's program for a Master's of Science in Educational Technology at Cal State Fullerton. Romel is a member of Zone 59 Cerritos and Pulse of Cerritos Facebook groups to keep track of the happenings within his neighborhood in Cerritos. Romel has two children who will be in high school this fall and thus have a vested interest in the safety of our community. Since the 1970s, several generations of his family have taken residence in and around the Cerritos area. Romel has lived in Cerritos for over four decades, and he and his family plan to stay rooted in this community for more, for many more generations to come. Romel De Leon. And I'm honored to nominate Mike Rosario to the Community Safety Committee. Mike Rosario is married to Kirsten Abundo Rosario. Together, they have five children and one granddaughter. Both Rosario and Abundo families moved to Cerritos in 1975. Mike is a 49-year resident. He was a student of ABC Unified's Elliott Elementary, Tetslof Middle School, and Cerritos High School. Mike has worked for 30 years in the software development industry. He is a current Director of Application Development at Cambro Manufacturing, and Mike is an active neighborhood watch block captain. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Rosario. And I would like to ask if my colleagues would move and second the approval of my nominations.
I move to approve it.
Second.
Thank you, thank you.
Second Yokoyama. Congratulations. Congratulations to the appointees by Councilmember Palito. Will you please come up to receive, to take the oath of office? Councilmember Palito will be joining you.
Congratulations.
You want to take video too? This part.
And if I may, for the record, so that we know who was sworn in this evening, if you may state your name for the record?
Armin Reyes.
Kathy De Leon.
Brian Ferrer. Matthew Scamahorn. Mike Rosario.
Thank you. And if you would, please raise your right hand and say aye and state your name.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I do.
Thank you, congratulations.
Right over here, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three.
Sorry.
One, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Thank you. Right over here, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Right over here, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three.
Okay, so can my council colleagues please join me to take a group photo with Mark Palito's appointees?
This'll work, all right, everybody? Right over here, please, on three, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more, please, one, two, and three. Yeah, that's like a Gloria. Come in, Senator Palito. Hey, Malia? Look at Malia. Palito.
Good luck to everyone.
It's good to see you, it's good to see you.
Hi, you, Councilmember. Congratulations. Congratulations, Dean.
Okay, so congratulations to the appointees of the new council members. Councilmember Hong, Councilmember Say, Councilmember Palito's appointees. I understand that Councilmember, Mayor Protem Johnson, as well as myself, we don't have any appointments to make tonight, but I understand Council, Mayor Protem Johnson would like to make a motion?
Yes. In the past, the city has had an Economic Development Commission. As we all know, the economic development is the revenue engine that makes money for our city. It plays a crucial role in fostering economic growth, business expansion, and new company relocations. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to include as part of our commissions and committees, the Economic Development Commission.
I second that motion.
Can you declare more, what is the function? Why we need this committee, commission?
We've had this committee in the past, and to bring it. We've had this committee in the past, and to bring it, economic development is really a crucial, crucial role that we need in the city to bring in economic development, and we need a board, a commission, to help discuss and how we can bring in more revenue to the city.
Right, and we stopped it for a couple?
We did.
Yeah, and they meet like every quarter, right?
It depends on the...
But I mean, the old ones, I remember they meet every quarter.
Okay, so it appears there is council consensus to bring this commission back to life. It was removed from the municipal code, so the staff will provide in the future a staff report for the creation, or the recreation of the Economic Development Commission. And we can work with a subcommittee to provide the details of what the commission will comprise of and the details of how often they meet, or if you want that to be brought back as an item that previously had the commission, I think, meet quarterly, they did not have to be residents, but they did have to have a business in the city. So those items can be brought back, we can create a committee or utilize one of the ad hoc working groups to make that happen, to bring it back to the council at a future date.
Mayor Protem Johnson made a motion, it was seconded by Councilmember Palito, she did not make a request for consensus, so what is your advice on how we proceed?
It needs to be brought back, just like any other item, the previous item, to create the commission via ordinance, so it does have to come back as an ordinance to create the commission formally. So I would recommend that the motion...
Do I need to restate my motion, then?
Yes, this is what I understand it to be, that there is consensus to bring back an agenda item for the creation of the Economic Development Commission via ordinance, and we can work with the ad hoc working group to provide details of what the commission will look like, the makeup, how often they meet, and the details related to that commission.
Councilmember Say?
Just clarification, so you had the consensus right now, I mean, motion is seconded already, now we need to go to vote for this, am I right, committee? The new one possible, or have you guys to study and present back that we vote for?
It will be voted for formally when the item is brought back. I believe there is currently council consensus to bring that back.
So I do, I need to take back my motion since there was a second?
Either, yes, you can do that.
So I'm going...
It works either way.
So I'm, I'm gonna ask Mayor Protem Johnson to ask for consensus.
Yes, I'll take back the motion, I'm gonna ask council consensus to go ahead and have staff, direct the city manager to have staff develop a report on bringing back the Economic Development Commission.
Yes.
And I'll withdraw my second.
I agree, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Say agreed? Any of my other colleagues agree with Linda Johnson, Mayor Protem's Johnson's request for consensus?
Yes.
Yeah, Mark, Councilmember Hong and Councilmember Palito also say yes, so you have unanimous consensus. I thank, I thank those attendants for their patience. Do I, can I, as the presiding officer, hear item 9C ahead of 9B? Or do I have to ask for my colleagues to agree to that?
I would request that the council provide their consensus to reorder the agenda items.
I request consensus from my council colleagues to hear item 9C at this time ahead of 9B.
I'll concur.
Me too.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Say, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Prior to the consideration on item 9C point one, it has been recommended by the staff that I need to be excused myself for discussion and consideration of this item due to my ownership of property within the neighborhood being discussed. Following the conclusion of this item, I will return to my place on the dice. I will be asked excused.
So you are going to be recusing yourself from item 9C1?
Yes, that's, that's my resident area.
Okay.
Recommended by the staff.
Okay. I ask my colleagues for council consensus to hear item 9C2 ahead of 9C1.
I'll concur.
Okay, let's hear item 9C2 first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 9C2 relates to potential closure of streets in a particular neighborhood, of one street in a particular neighborhood. This item will be presented by two members of our team, firstly, Public Safety Manager Daryl Evans, followed by comments from Director of Public Works Alvin Papa. Following their presentation, all of us will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Mayor Yokoyama and City Councilmembers. And just for my clarity here, because of the way my PowerPoint is set up, are, are we going with 2C? Okay, so let me just adjust my PowerPoint here, I had it in reverse.
Sorry for the surprise, Daryl.
Oh, that's okay. Thanks, sir. So before you is Agenda Item Report 9C-2, entitled "Review and Consideration of the Soritos Council of the Potential Closer for Public Safety Purposes for One Entrance to the Residential Neighborhood bordered by the South Street to the North, Studebaker to the West, and 195th Street to the South, and Interstate 605 to the East." With that, if I could direct your attention to the screen, this is a slide showing the housing tract that we'll be speaking about. It consists of 205 single-family homes. It has two points of entry, one from Bigelow, one from Boss. As you can see from the map here, the red sign is the one for Bigelow. That is the street that was being considered to be closed. And just a moment here, as I adjust my slide, my presentation here. If I can, as I proceed here, I'd just like to direct your attention to some crime statistics before we talk about residential burglaries and closing streets. This is a 10-year perspective from the LA County Sheriff's Department, countywide, showing residential burglaries over a 10-year period, and in 2024, there were 4,181 residential burglaries throughout the jurisdiction of the LA County Sheriff's. And as you'll note through the other slides that come up, you'll see that one of the lowest years is 2020, and that's when COVID-19 began, so that's, that explains why the big dip there, and then you can see progressively that residential burglary started to increase as people adjusted to that. The next slide here in Crimes show you the Sorito Sheriff's Station charts, the deal with residential burglaries. In 2024, we had 205 residential burglaries, and you can see the pattern is the same there after 2020, which was the beginning of the pandemic, most people home, if you remember, you had to stay at home, and that's when you'll see the lowest level of res-burgs, and that's why we always talk about for people to make sure that your home looks like it's occupied, because whenever home's occupied, your chance of being burglarized diminish. But you'll see the statistics there increasing over a period of time, beginning from the onset of the pandemic. The next slide we have here is a 14-month slide. This shows that the residential burglaries within the city of Soritos, pretty much every portion of the city has their share of residential burglaries, just wanted to show you that visually. This statistic ends at the end of February 27. This is a chart that's prepared every month, and we have not received the March numbers yet, but there'll be another 10 or so burglaries attached to that chart. But this again shows you that burglaries happen throughout the city. The centerpiece there is Artesia, we don't track the burglaries that occur there. The next slide, if I'm gonna just switch off here because the, they're a little bit out of order because of the presentation. The next slide shows the crime that occurs in the residential tract that is east of Liberty Park. There was four residential burglaries there, two vehicle thefts, a robbery, and several other thefts that occurred. There has been no reported additional crime since placing the ALPR trailer there that's pictured on the right. That is also a live feed trailer, so that trailer is being monitored by a alarm company here in Soritos, and it also captures license plate data there that's, as well. My apologies for turning the screen off with my error, I thought we were gonna go with the other one first. I wanted to show you this map of the proposed ALPR camera positions within the city. The red map, the red dots are from the ALPR cameras that already exist in and around the Illustrio Center and the Auto Mall. The Phase 2 ones, which we now have possession of all those cameras, just waiting to install them. But the reason why I put this up is to show that down by Gridley and 195th, we will be putting a camera in there, and again, the other neighborhood that we'll be talking about, up by Soritos, the blue dot for Phase 3. And worked with Captain Drew Strong here to identify these intersections, these cameras capture the major arterials as people come and go through the streets. One of the other things that we do here, if you're not familiar, because we have some new council members, is gather data on all of our residential burglaries. What I show you here is an addendum to residential reports, where we capture a lot of information, and without reading that, I just want to show you the, the value of that. That information for each and every burglary gets transposed over to a crime analysis supplemental sheet where we track all the top 10 indicators as to why burglars select a particular home. That information is then transposed into this horizontal chart that we refer to as Operation Green Bar, and you can see there's an opportunity here for the residents to heed the warnings of the Sheriff's Department. In theory here, if you have all of the recommendations in place that the Sheriff's Department is providing, then you'll have the green bar. The red bar represents all the homes that were burglarized that do not heed the warnings of the Sheriff's Department and are more likely to be burglarized. And I know that we have a lot of residents here tonight, and we appreciate their support and participation in Neighborhood Watch, but I can tell you, the majority of the people who are being burglarized are not heeding to the warnings here, so that's one of the things we want to work more robustly on, is getting that message out. That information is put into a burglary abatement handout and given to the residents, so that's, that's very important there. I'm just switch off here for a moment and switch back to my report. For those who may not be aware, the previous council directed staff to hold an impromptu public meeting with residents of the impacted residential neighborhoods on February 14th. During that meeting, LA County Fire Department Battalion Chief Alex Linton, Public Works Director Alvin Papa, and Soritos Captain Drew Strong, along with Mayor Protem Johnson, attended that meeting. During the meeting, Battalion Chief Lexington expressed that the decision to permanently close one access street into a large residential tract is at the discretion of the city. However, a battalion chief cautioned that doing so would extend the response times to firefighters due to the potential added distance between the single point of entry and the involved structure. Battalion Chief added that during a structured fire, the LA County Fire Department typically responds with three fire engines, therefore maintaining sufficient access to residential neighborhoods is essential to ensure maximum efficiency of rescue operations. Sorito Sheriff's Station Captain Drew Strong, who's here this evening, expressed his concern regarding the potential for extended response times in the same manner as the battalion chief. With that, I will now call upon Public Works Director Alvin Papa to add his comments regarding the potential street closures and implementation measures. Director Papa?
Thank you, Daryl. Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to provide you a brief overview on the implementation measures for the subject temporary closures. Staff conducted a preliminary review to ensure that these closures are executed safely and in compliance with best practices. We consulted with the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and they strongly advised us that we conduct a full traffic study, as well as conducting extensive public outreach before implementing temporary traffic control measures. If we did decide to proceed, key steps would include the following. Developing a required traffic control plan. This would ensure safety and compliance with regulations and also engineering standards. The cost of doing such a plan is approximately $5,000 to $10,000. This would be followed by installation of temporary barricades, signage, and flashers. The estimated cost of that effort is approximately $20,000 to $35,000, and this is for the one location. And then at the same time, we would conduct a traffic study to assess long-term impacts at a cost of approximately $3,500 to $4,500. This study would evaluate the rerouted traffic patterns and their impacts on emergency response, the impacts on trash collection and street sweeping, as well as the impact on truck traffic and delivery routes. You know, overall, the total projected costs for implementation of these temporary traffic control measures would be approximately $28,000 to $50,000. Staff is providing this information for council's consideration and discussion and welcomes further direction on how to proceed. With that, thank you, that concludes my portion of the report, and I'll turn it back to Daryl.
Thank you, Director Papa. It's worth noting that since the last discussion regarding potential street closures, the city has received multiple phone calls, emails, and written correspondence from residents expressing concerns and voicing their opposition to the potential closure of the streets. Staff has also received feedback from residents in other neighborhoods wherein the city who are also interested in having access to their neighborhoods limited in a similar fashion. To date, staff has received a total of three emails, written correspondence, and two phone calls from residents sharing opposition to the potential closure. In conclusion, in order to address residential crime in Soritos, the city has been aggressive in implementing a variety of supplemental measures over the last six months to support the efforts of the Sorito Sheriff's Department. Those efforts have included the addition of private security patrols, deployment of ALPR cameras. Further efforts also include the potential closures. However, the decision to close the street is significant and brings potential to collateral impact that would be thoroughly, should be thoroughly considered and understood before moving forward to ensure the safe implementation and closure of the mitigation of potential risk. Accordingly, staff recommends that the City Council consider the finding and public feedback outlined in this report and direct staff accordingly. It's recommended that the City Council review and discuss the information provided and direct staff accordingly.
Thank you, Daryl, and thank you, Alvin. Council colleagues, I'd like to first hear from the residents. I'd like to hear from the residents, I'd like to hear from the public, so I'm gonna just go directly to the speakers, the public speakers. We want to share public comment on item 9C2. Bruce Leach, followed by Susie Vigil.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Bruce Leach. My wife and I have lived on Allingham Avenue adjacent to Liberty Park for 55 years. We are completely happy with the city, the Sheriff's Department, not so much with state legislature the last 12, 14 years, but because we are concerned with the crime, excuse me, issues. Porch light on all night, gates locked, doors, even the back doors locked when we're not out on the patio but in adjacent rooms. when we're not out on the patio but in adjacent rooms. Have security cameras, alarm system. So we are concerned about crime, but we do not support closing a street off because of the safety issues, life safety issues. We do support the license-reading cameras at both of our entrances. That is proven effective with this temporary location, and it's a reasonable alternative. And I think that'll cover it.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Susie Vigil is next.
Hello, I'm Susie. I'm at the track across Liberty Park, and I'm here with some very good news. Since the surveillance trailer was dropped off at our track at the entrance of Bigelow, on February 7th, it's been a while. We've had zero incidents of home break-ins or acts of violence. So it seems to be working to prevent crime. So we are so happy, and thank you, thank you. We've been, you know, we're all talking, and people are so grateful and so hopeful, but we know the trailer is just temporary, and we know that it has to, you know, probably be shared with all the other neighborhoods. So we are here to take back our request to consider the one entrance trial. And I'm speaking, I've spoken to probably every neighbor. We can take that back, okay? We don't care for that one entrance trial. But please do consider providing permanent cameras at the neighborhood with proper signage, because we all have, we have certain, I did mention at one point, we have so many license plate readers and home cameras, but obviously, the city provided, you know, the law enforcement provided ones with the proper signage, like the red trailer works. So please, please provide permanent cameras. There's 205 homes. 174 people in our track quickly signed the following petition. We like to do these petitions just to show that it's, there's all these neighbors, you know, that like this idea. So here it goes. It says, "Attention, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. Thank you for considering our request to block one entrance trial in hopes to reduce crimes in our track. We've heard your feedback and understand the inconvenience of the one entrance trial to our neighborhood and to the city. On February 7th, soon after we presented our concerns and requests, a surveillance trailer at the entrance of Bigelow was installed. Since then, we've had zero home burglaries, and we are so grateful. Therefore, we, the undersigned homeowners of Zone B Area 25, petition the city to provide and install permanent surveillance cameras at both entrances, Boss and Bigelow, to continue preventing crime in our neighborhood in lieu of the one entrance trial. We understand this too will cost the city some money, but we believe it's an excellent compromise that will satisfy everyone involved." And 174 homes signed and liked this plan. Thank you, thank you, Darryl, and thank you, everyone, all of you, for helping out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vigil. Does the council have a copy of that? Have we received a copy of that? Any other members of the public who would like to speak on Agenda Item 9C2? Thank you for speaking. If you could please state your name?
My name is Brenda Coleman, and you, some of your members received the letter that I submitted two weeks ago to the council and the mayor. And I'm sorry, I don't do public speaking, but I just felt it important. I was prepared to speak two weeks ago, and then this evening, I totally support everything that Susie just said, and I just wanted to share some of the thoughts for you new members that weren't quite aware of a lot of our feelings. I'm also a 50-year resident of Cerritos, and we raised our children here. And the neighbors around me, 55 years, longtime residents. So our feeling is, and this was before Susie's new proposal, that we don't close the entrances, was that, let's see, let me chuck my nose here. So with the 204, there's several reasons that we were against the proposal of the closures. Into our track, there's just the two streets going into 204 homes. And so when you visualize it, there's 204 homes, and each, there's probably two drivers plus maybe teenage drivers, maybe there's four drivers in those homes. So we've got 800 cars coming in and out. Now, I'm a resident on Allingham Avenue. My home is right near Bigelow. And so you'd have all these people going just down, in and out the one entrance. And I really commended Councilman Voe when he addressed the fact of the 911 calls and the, you know, the fire and the paramedics. Personally, I had an experience that I can relate that when my husband suffered a stroke in 2014, the paramedics came immediately and rushed him to Memorial Hospital, where he arrived within a four-hour window to receive the TPA injection, which did save a prolonged his life, and that was very, very important. So to anybody that would need that assistance, and it wasn't readily available because trying to get in and out of that one track and trying to, you know, it just is unrealistic, right? Within the last month, we've had the paramedics respond just to our street alone at least five times within the last month. So it's, there's an urgency to make sure that we're able to accept either the fire services or the paramedic services. And we also have a great deal of traffic coming in and out daily with Amazon UPS deliveries, gardeners, pool maintenance workers, contractors, visitors, and just in and out, you know, all the time. And just when our track was constructed many years ago, we sure engineers did all, whatever was necessary, and they confirmed. And that's why they built that home with two, you know, two streets getting in and out of our track. So for our particular track, it's very, very critical that we do not close either of those entrances. And so we feel very firmly about that, and we bless Susie for all the hard work she's done to realize that this isn't the best solution. So I totally support these cameras that everybody's asking for, and they've seen that it works. It's been working very well with the trailer that's there right now. And so we commend everybody for the work they're doing to help us support this. And I'm sorry, I'm not a good public speaker. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Ms. Coleman, you did great. You did great, Ms. Coleman. Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to speak on public comment on Item 9C2?
Mayor, if I may, for the record, state.
Yeah, I know what you're going to say, and I just wanted to, before you say anything, Councilmember Say stated that she's going to recuse herself for Item 9C1. And even though this is written correspondence, this is public comment in written correspondence, it is not limited to 9C2. It is 9C. So is it appropriate, City Attorney, to reference this written correspondence that is not limited to Item 9C2?
That's perfectly acceptable. It is a public record, and it can be alluded to as part of the presentation.
Just don't want Councilmember Say's recusal on 9C1 to be compromised. Can the City Attorney now speak on the written correspondence?
Yes, it's acceptable.
And the City Clerk, please speak on the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting, the City Council received full text unredacted copies of three written comments submitted by the deadline for Item 9C, not specific to 9C1 or 9C2. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the City Clerk during regular business hours. Thank you.
Thank you to the members of the public for speaking on this item. And do my council colleagues have any questions or comments regarding Item 9C2? Councilmember Hong?
I was kind of worried before I come to the meeting, because I do door knocking around those area, and I really sympathize all those residents when they told me about those horrible story. I was almost in tears. I can feel for them, you know? And, but I'm glad that we come to a conclusion, and I think you all make a wise decision, because I personally think the safety, not just only the burglary, but we also have to concern about the safety of the life, like, you know, all the professional advice from Fire Department, from Sheriff Department as well. I was also concerned about if, unfortunately, something happened because we blocked the street, and then the city's liability insurance could be increased as well. So as long-term wise, I think we just have to work together, and we would try to do what we can do to help you to make this, you know, neighborhood to be more safe. So I'm glad we come out with a very good conclusion, and we have to hopefully rely on our Sheriff Department, our Safety Department. We are going to do a much better job and make sure to keep your neighborhood more safety, more safe. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming out tonight. I know you stayed very long, but based on the comments, and I want to thank Susie for doing her due diligence of actually speaking to each and every one of her neighbors and for the comments that we've heard tonight, I'd like to actually ask this council that we just receive and file this Item 9C2, however, but to proceed with continuous criminal abatement measures.
I second that.
Thank you.
Did you make a motion or?
That would be.
But you didn't make it yet.
I did not make it.
Because I have some questions and comments. Thank you.
Mayor?
Oh, I'll let Councilmember Say make her questions and comments before I go. Go ahead, Councilmember Say.
I do want to say something. Ms. Coleman, you did a great job. Beautiful, the speech was really good. My concern here is, right now, I can feel how you feel, because I had it two times, broken up to my house. And I, first time was the 80, and the second time was the 2000, actually just about three years ago. It was horrible. When I went home, it was everything up and down. And I don't know, was it safe for me to sleep in the house? Or I don't know what's happened the next day. But there's some kind of expectation also, as elected official, I always want to know, what is our budget? You know, again, our safety comes first. No money can compete that. But as elected official, we need to look both side corner there. What is the chance for us to implement those, the camera around the area, also signs? How soon we can get it? Do we have the budget to allocate that?
I can speak broadly to that. There is a cost to not only acquiring equipment and installing it, but there's also an ongoing cost for monitoring. There, we did invest in this temporary trailer as a test measure. Glad to see that it seems to be working. I can defer to Mr. Evans, who can provide some details on the cost of that. But as far as any potential permanent installation of a camera system, we would have to do some research, come back, not only on cost, but also on feasibility of location and implications, and whether it would be welcome in a particular neighborhood. If it were to be installed in one area, of course, then the city would expect additional requests, perhaps throughout the whole city, which is a significant budgetary consideration.
What I also want to say, the best practice, the cost effective, what we see right now, the two area, one is right by the Liberty Park, and the other one is actually my resident area. The crime has went up so high, and people is, I mean, we are scared. You know, myself was really scared. And I, like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, where I heard the neighbor, somebody just got the house broken in and went to help them, it's a lot of emotion involved with that. If we can use this two area, I mean, might just kind of ask the staff, use them as an experimental case and see how well we can control we do, then maybe we do need to consider future visiting our area to purchase more. So every corner can be taken care of that. And people on Liberty Park, people from other areas really scared right now. They kind of, I mean, not just scared right now, people start turning scared to became angry, unsafe. So I don't know. I so agree with Council, Mayor Protem, Ms. Johnson just mentioned about, I support that. But I also really want to take some action on it to protect them right now, because they don't feel safe. And they stepped down, they say, "Okay, don't block the street. We're willing to, please install that for us." Maybe we can try some, I always believe, my background's research, evidence-based practice. So if we can choose two area, see if the crime rate goes down.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. So Darryl, how much does, how much does it cost for us to have this? Hold on, please. How much, what is the cost of this newly acquired Alper live-feed camera trailer that's on Bigelow Street? How much does it cost for us to get another one like that? Or how much does each one, each one cost, and what are the monitoring costs, please?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Yokiyama. We purchased or contracted for the deluxe model, if you would. A lot of these trailers that you'll see in shopping centers, they just record license plate information, ALPR. This particular one not only records ALPR and monitors everything, this one's a live feed to the security company, Monir, which is a Cerritos-based security company. And so those cameras that are in there have AI, and so they are recognizing suspicious activity. Not only is it for stolen vehicles, we've had them alert us to transients and people walking back and forth. So not only is it monitoring vehicles, it would monitor people, bicycles, because it's live feed. I say that because we can reduce that level and just have a non-live feed where it's ALPR only, where it's just registering the license plates and keying to any car that might be stolen or, you know, in the SVS system or stolen vehicle system from the Sheriff's Department, where you don't have a person actually monitoring it from a base. So that can be reduced. But this particular system is $3,000 per month or $100 per day.
How much, how much did you say?
$3,000 per month. This trailer was built for us, so they created it for us for our needs, and it's about $100 a day, again, with all the monitoring and everything that we put on it. I'm sure that we work with the company. If you're looking to, you know, expand the program, we'll go back to them, see if the rates differ. Or perhaps, again, we don't need the live feed monitor, or maybe we do in some places, in others, we don't. So in residential areas, you may choose to do that. Where in commercial districts, you may just want to monitor the traffic of the cars passing, because there's nobody actually lingering in the commercial districts late at night. It's more vehicle traffic than foot or pedestrian traffic. So as seen and as existing, it's $3,000 per month or $100 per day.
And, but we're committed to that because we ordered it and we have it. So it's just, it's 3,000 per month, and we're going to be paying that no matter where it's located in Cerritos.
That's correct. And that's one of the advantages is, it is mobile, we move it around. And so there's no long-term lease. The company is very cooperative, and they're eager to display their product as well. And they have other contracts with auto dealerships. It's not just this, they've been around for a long time.
Do you think we can reduce the cost per unit if we obtain more than one?
I will work with them, and I can have that answer to you by tomorrow.
So I'd like to ask for council consensus that our 25 our 25, 26 budget include public safety manager Daryl Evans, Captain Drew Strong's and city manager Robert Lopez's recommendation on the number of these automatic license plate reader, live feed camera trailers that our city needs to keep Cerritos as safe as possible. Could you please make sure that the budget preparation that's going to be discussed also on item 9D? I would like you to recommend to us how many of these trailers we can obtain to keep our residents safe. Do I have consensus?
I concur.
Concur. Just for clarification, this is, we're still on 9C2.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Because you're going to make a motion at some point.
Can I have another question come out if you don't mind?
And I'm done.
You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like this trailer, in the meantime, to stay exactly where it's at. Is there? Is there a reason why we can't do that? I would like it to stay exactly where it's at while you're preparing the budget to obtain more of these?
Absolutely. That can be done at your direction. It's, it's mobile and actually the longer it stays, the more valid the test will be, you know, because any couple of weeks, it really is not conclusive. But if it's there a month or two and there's no burglaries in there, then we can assume that it was very effective.
So I asked for consensus from my council colleagues to keep the Alper live feed camera trailer. It's on, it's on Begelow Street, is that right? To leave it, leave it there until further direction from the council or public safety manager Daryl Evans or Captain Strong provide an update to us that we need to, to discuss moving the trailer. But in the meantime, leave it exactly where it's at. Is that, is that a good request for consensus?
I concur.
I concur as well. Me too.
Okay, great. So that's going to stay right where it's at, okay? So another thing I'd like to do is I want to supplement the boots on the ground. The, 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 the people keeping Cerritos safe, the hardworking people keeping Cerritos safe. And we're currently budgeted for three community safety officers who patrol our city. And I'd like to ask for council consensus to increase immediately the number of budgeted community safety officers effective immediately to five community safety officers.
I concur.
I give concurrence. I concur.
I have a question here. If it's okay, a concern.
Please, what is your question?
Thank you very much. What I'm calculating right now is a $3,000 per month times to 12, 36,000. The reason I said this, you know, as I mentioned, one of the public hearing one time, we all, you know, it's 24 hours, the security office cannot be 36 hours, 26, 24 hour watch for you. And the camera, I do support the camera. The camera put out there too, but you know, the license plate, they can change, they can use a faking one, right? They can stolen the car. So it's still going to have a hard time to catch them. And I think, I always think, nobody can protect you unless yourself has started protect yourself. So if I calculate $3,600, 36,000 divided by 10, it's a 3,600. 3,600 if we give incentive to the resident. And then we also contract with the, I have a rear security window right now in my house. So far, it's called majestic window. Really protect me well and a triple lock, the door and the screen door. If we can come out with the, I know there was a fund there, funded safety fund from Janice Hong, if I remember correctly, I read it. There's some, maybe Ms. Johnson knows it. There was a fund was exposed to one time I read it. If we can look something fun like that, we can use incentive to the neighbor, to the resident, if they want that window protect window. They can come out, monthly payment, negotiate with the vendor. We also give some incentive that we did the tree. Remember before, when a tree affected long, they were paying 3,000 to 4,000 to the resident, have them fix the front yard. And that can be also applied to the resident if people want it. Because to me, no matter how we trying to protect yourself, you have another, if we offer another five people for a security thing, consider that each one's extra security is $150,000 times three, that's almost a 5,000, 50,000, $500,000, that's plus insurance. So that's a lot of overhead cost to, to the city. If we can consider that, use that budget to assist in the residents have a secure window in place. A lot of area, high end area, Pasadena, Santa Monica, they all have the kind of special window, window and sliding door apply. That's my suggestion. I'm just thinking how much overhead we paying additional staff, but however, still not 100% protect them. They still have a chance to wait for people gone, then there go, they breaking the house. So it won't be 100% protect. But when you have a security majestic window, pretty much, I believe, at least we can say not 100%, but better than the people cannot be your house 24 hour. There's no way they'll be my house, watch my house. I'm just suggesting, if we can come with incentive to the community, the future, the overhead cost, what I'm calculating right now here is almost a million right there. The line, the, the card, then additional five people, five staff, safety officer, plus the security, plus sheriff department, that's over a million dollar a year overhead costs us. And this is my suggestion. I feel like maybe we can get into that, the future though. You know, we should take, taking to the incentive to the resident, encourage them to replace secure window.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you. So I asked for consensus to increase the number of community safety officers from the current budgeted three to a total of five. And I received consensus?
Excuse me, can I have a question?
Sure.
When you increase a security person, how about the hours? Are we increasing the hours as well?
Thank you. That's a good question. So I was going to please ask public safety manager Daryl Evans, can you please share with us what community safety officers are doing for our residents of Cerritos and for our city of Cerritos, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. Community safety officers are part-time employees. They have limited benefits. They're 35 hour per week, but they're not full time. They supplement the sheriff's department. So what they are trained to do is go out and investigate crimes and assist the sheriff's department on, say, traffic collisions. The ultimate goal for them is to handle non-active crimes where they're taking reports and assisting the sheriff's department to free up the deputies so that the deputies can go do the more confrontational activities or looking for suspects. The CSOs, they are not armed. They do not do car stops. They do not engage people. But what they would do is say someone's house was burglarized or I should back up and say what they would do is patrol the streets, just like Southwest Patrol. They are in marked vehicles that have the word Cerritos sheriffs on it. Those vehicles are equipped with MDCs or mobile digital computers, sheriff's radios. They are trained by the sheriff's department to take police reports, DNA, to gather DNA, to gather fingerprints, to gather other evidence as well. And so should a resident be burglarized, instead of sending a deputy there, we would send the CSO there to do the initial investigation and work with the residents and then gather all the evidence and, and again, keeping the deputies free. They're about one-third the price of a deputy sheriff, if you would. So it's a lot better to have a civilian employee there than, than the deputies. If they were to arrive and discover that the suspect was there or there was some workable information, then they would call the deputy sheriff over to, you know, engage in that type of investigation if the suspects were nearby or suspected to be still in the area. And so the ultimate goal there is to handle the work that would not be required by a deputy. Typical thing is if you have a traffic accident, you'll often see a radio car blocking the street if there's an accident or overturned car. Well, that's a deputy sheriff that's going to sit there for an hour until that traffic accident is cleared. That'd be a civilian employee that would be out there or CSO would be blocking and redirecting traffic. So because they are employees of the city, we can direct them accordingly, change their hours, change their shifts. Whereas Southwest Patrol is a contract, so they're pretty set on what they do. And they're very limited. They don't engage any type of police activity at all. They are just another set of eyes and ears out there. They're very effective at what they do, but they don't provide service directly to residents. They're not interacting with them or taking reports or anything like that.
You're talking about Southwest Patrol?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any other questions about this matter of community safety officers? Councilmember Hong?
No, but I think just based on what I think, if we can increase more patrol people and then we, we can make it like 24 hours, seven days, that would be really helpful. Because I do see patrol cars around and I really appreciate that. And every, all the residents, all my neighborhood like chilling out, say, hey, that's great. We see the patrol car here, you know. So if we can increase to five persons, five people and with seven days, 24 hours, because a lot of crime time would be at nighttime as well, you know. So that would be really, really helpful. Of course, depending on the budget and we have to try to work on the budget as well.
If, if I may suggest, the potential addition of new positions, understand the, the interest in the additional eyes on the street. It is a budgetary item. If I may suggest, bringing it to the council as part of the upcoming fiscal year budget discussion, looking at potential new positions and also evaluation of the Southwest Patrol that we have on a temporary basis. And then we can have consideration of potential change in scope and also the cost associated with that.
Can I have a question?
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Sei.
One more questions. We have, you know, we just finished our elections. The way I counted was more like 70 precinct area. So how frequently they do one area for five minutes or 10 minutes, they go to the next one? Because we have five extra staffs coming out. Total, how many staff we have? You're adding another five seats in here, right? Five position. But we have, how many we have currently?
Are you asking about my request for consensus?
I'm asking.
To have five, to have five community safety officers?
Yeah, we have five right now. You're asking more, an additional five.
There's three and the request is to increase it to five.
Also, so only have.
Add two.
So add two is a total of five.
Correct.
So five cars goes out. But not every, all the time. I'm just counting the time making surrounding time.
They, they, they do act on different shifts, sometimes concurrently, sometimes spread apart. So that there is coverage throughout the week currently.
If I may add, that is correct. We deploy them based on calls for service, historical need. We find that there's not much need for them after midnight. You know, the statistics don't support that. People are at home. There's very few traffic collisions, you know, out there. So it's, it would be a waste to deploy them at four o'clock in the morning, let's just say. So generally, it's on the day shift, maybe a little overlap and on the weekends. But the middle of the night, the deputies can handle that. Also, response times are pretty quick in the middle of the night. It, it takes a while to move across the city on a, on a Friday afternoon, but you can zip around the city at four o'clock in the morning pretty quickly. You know, you can get on the 91 freeway and use the 605. You can, you can cross back and forth here very short period of time. So we don't recommend putting them, you know, on the early morning shift.
I will respect my mayor and my council. They had a motion and second on the table here already. I would agree with them, but just in the case, I will, I will wait for the results, see if the crime rate goes down after we increase the manpower. So, so far, I concur with you, your suggestion.
Thank you, thank you, councilmember Sei. So I asked for consensus. We have consensus to immediately increase. The council has given consensus to immediately increase the number of community safety officers from the current three to an increase to five total. And that consensus has been given. We have made that direction to the city. I asked for consensus from my colleagues that the budget for the 25, 26 fiscal year of the city of Cerritos present a budget that has five community safety officers, not three. Do I have consensus?
I concur.
Yes, yes.
I asked for consensus that the budget for the 25, 26 fiscal year include a robust program to increase our volunteers on patrol program and our reserve deputies program. So whatever we're doing with that, Daryl, my request for consensus is that you present us a budget so that the public safety, the pub, the community safety office, working with our Cerrito Sheriff's Station, we communicate and recruit as many volunteers on patrols, volunteers on patrol, our VOPS, and our reserve deputies. Do I have consensus?
I concur.
Yes, I concur.
Thank you to my colleagues. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Otherwise, councilmember Mayor Protem Johnson has a motion. Any other questions or comments? Okay, council, Mayor Protem Johnson.
Do I need to repeat my motion?
Mayor Protem, the motion that I heard was motion by Mayor Protem Johnson and seconded by councilmember Polito to receive and file this report and proceed with continuous crime abatement measures.
That's my motion.
Councilmember Sei's screen does not have the voting, the voting screen.
And if I may do, I could do a roll call vote if you like.
Yeah, please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hong? Councilmember Polito?
Yes.
Councilmember Sei? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Yokiyama?
Yes.
Motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Item 9C1, do we have a report? Oh, let's hold on for a moment. Item 9C1, anybody want to say anything?
Mayor, thank you, mayor. As I mentioned prior before, it was suggested by the staff recommendation that excuse myself for the discussion and consideration of the item 9C.1. Due to my ownership of property within the neighborhood being discussed, so following the conclusion of this item, I will return to my place on the dice, if it's okay for my council members.
You don't need, you don't need, is that the original? Okay, so that's the original. Let's, let's take care of that, please. Okay, 9C1, could we please get, is there a report?
Yes.
City manager for 9C1.
Yes, thank you, mayor. For 9C1, the overview will be given by a public safety manager, Daryl Evans. It's similar in scope to what was heard previously. He'll provide a brief summary.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Public safety manager, Daryl Evans, you don't, you don't need to repeat anything that you already said for item 9C2. And then if the, the council has any questions for elaboration, they will definitely ask you. Thank you.
Thank you. And as mentioned, this is the issues, merits and risk expressed in Agenda Report 9C2 apply to 9C1. And so just have a couple of slides for you. This is going to be discussing the Morning Sun Residential Track, which is south of 166, east of Studebaker Road. This track consists of, this track consists of 230 single family homes, as you can see on the display. on the display. The insert photograph is of Spinnaker at Studebaker, and that would be the street that would be considered foreclosure during the discussion. So that's the track we're speaking about. And the crime within there, this is the same slide that was shown last time, that between February 26, 25, I've looked at the crime this morning, there was no other reported crime there on crimemapping.com. So we had four burglaries, couple thefts, and the red tag there which says two, that's two incidents. That was a burglary and a vehicle theft there. And so all other issues, merits, and risks expressed in the other report apply to this as well. So I have no other information unless you have some questions regarding this.
Does the council have any questions regarding item 9C1 in the report given by Public Safety Manager Darryl Evans? Okay, I'm gonna go to the public comment, Mel Cortez.
It's like, I think, the third time I'm here talking about this. The picture I gave you is, we, my neighborhood met with Sean Bowe as a whole, then we met with Councilmember Linda Johnson, and we actually showed her what our vision was with Spinnaker and how we thought planters would be an easy way to block temporarily the street and make it look nice. So that's the street, you could see the street, Spinnaker. From the calls that you got and emails, I wonder, we didn't separate, they were from one neighborhood from the other. So I'm not sure the opposition from my neighborhood, there's no one here, from my neighborhood, I only heard one person that talked to me. I heard about collateral, one of the collaterals hit an impact, or closing one of the streets would be less crime. So there's several collaterals, but one would be less crime if we closed Spinnaker. Our neighborhood has three entries. 166 is used by most. Greeley, most of the locals, and Studebaker is the least used because there's no left turn. When you come in our neighborhood, there's no left turn, it's only a right turn. And when you coming into the neighborhood from the north, there's no left turn either. You could only make a right turn coming from the south. We want to continue with the traffic study and survey of the community. I didn't bring the survey because we were told that you wouldn't believe us if I bring my own survey. The city ones needed to do their own. So I hope that you will continue with the survey and the traffic study to see, you should close Spinnaker. There's no trailer in Morning Sun, okay? Like on the other track. We are the trailer. We are the ones monitoring. We are the one taking pictures of cars and license plates. We're the ones keeping all those records because we don't have the trailer. It costs maybe 30, 40,000 to do the traffic study and the survey. I'm not sure what's the real cost, but we are already spending about $4 million to subsidize CCPA. We're the residents, and it's about safety. If we're able to subsidize other areas, we could also try a small, tiny percentage on trying something different. Last time I was asked about, how come we didn't have that many residents? Because they're afraid of coming out. First of all, it's already 10:30, but they don't want to leave the neighborhood because they're afraid of being robbed. We're on our toes every day. We don't have any crime because we've been alert. As soon as we, and I'm not telling you because of the last few months, it's because of the last few years. We've been doing this for many years. So we know that as soon as we leave or guard down, they're gonna come back. And they've been coming back. One more thing, Liberty Park area, or tracked from 1C2, 9C2, they have a license plate reader on south of Studebaker. In Phase 2, they're gonna install Greeley, 195th, another license plate reader. And they have a trailer. What do we have? It's only us. So we don't have any license plate readers near our neighborhood. We don't have the trailer. It's just about 200 residents that are always taking care of our area. Also, they took our private security. Private security was with us for, for the beginning, and then they're gone. Do I see the CSO once in a while? I think it's Mr. Smith, but he's not there all the time. I see him once in a while, and I have proof because we got videos all the times they come by. Security was there four, five, six times a day, seven times. I met, I met the person, we used to talk, talk about what's going on, but we don't have anybody. So right now, it's just us. If you choose to deny this, then instead of installing the license plate reader on Phase 2 until next year's budget, move the license plate reader to Phase 2, which is this year. They're already here. So we don't have anything at least, don't wait until July or maybe until August, September, or October, at the end of the year, to bring the license plate reader to our neighborhood. If you deny this, so I'm telling you, we don't have, we don't have that, we don't have anything. But if you choose just to deny it and leave us on our own, like we have been for the past, I don't know, since beginning of, after we met with Ms. Linda Johnson, if you choose to do that, we don't mind. We have been doing this for many years. We could take care of our own. We don't need city support as we've been doing for the past few weeks. Deputies have been working with us, but we know they cannot be there all the time. So I'm asking you to, if you're gonna deny this, first of all, we want you to move on and go ahead and try it. $40,000 out of millions could be a good try. If it works out, great. If it doesn't work out, that's just temporary, only four months. But if you choose not to do it, we're asking you to install the license plate reader on Phase 2, not Phase 3, on 166 at Studebaker, because that's the place where I always live. When they escaped from Spinnaker or Studebaker, they had to go through 166 at Studebaker. There's no other way out. And that's where most of the cars, based on our experience, live. They don't live through Greeley, they don't live through 166. It's always, that's what, that's the street that we tried to close. So, but if it doesn't happen, I still have about 200 neighbors that would keep helping us to stay safe. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am here to support Mel by closing that entrance because our family has been, has been suffering from a lot of incidents. Our house is in the corner, and wind jammer, and woodwork. So our backyard is right behind the 91 freeway. So like Mel says, people exit the 91 freeway and the Studebaker, and then they just go straight to our house, where I live. We suffered some terrified incidents, like the first one, it was that I was on alarm and someone tried to open this sliding door. This, my dining room table is right in front of the dining room, and when I saw the two people trying to open the door, my cell phone right, it was right there on the dining room table. I didn't have no choice. I had to, you know, go face them. And the only one that we have between was my sliding door. But that was the only way I can call the police, right? I had to go and get my cell phone. And I think the only thing that saved me that day, that kept me safe, it was my dog. My dog was inside with me. I have this big American Akita, which is bigger than a German Shepherd. I think if they wouldn't sell the dog, they would break the door and they would go inside the house. I was on alarm. Another incident that we have is that my, my son was treated by someone leaving our house from the garage inside his truck. This guy just was riding his bike, and my son, he was going to work. It was early, around 3:00. He was going to work at Ceritos. And this guy on a bike, it was just right in front of our, our house, so my son stopped so that way he would, he will move. And instead of to keep going on his bike, he approached my, my son with a knife. So thank God that, you know, my son is a really good athlete, and his rooflets are instantly, so, so he rolled his window up. And, and I mean, not too long ago, when they were, we were having a lot of robberies in our neighborhood, our neighbors' cameras across the street, they recorded three individuals, 3:00 AM in the morning, lying in our garage windows, trying to figure out how to go inside our garage. We were there. All those incidents, we were home. I mean, we had house alarm, we had a big dog, and we always lock our windows, our doors, and, I mean, it's, it's just scary. I mean, we follow a lot of the precautions, you know, like Mel comes to the meetings all the time here, and he suggests what we should do, like light our homes and park cars outside, leave the TV zone, have the house lights inside. I mean, it seems like nothing stops these criminals. We have cameras, but what does the cameras do? We have the ADD, the house alarm, it doesn't do nothing. I mean, what, what do we do? And on top of that, you know, I mean, Wind Jammer, it doesn't have homes on the, on the, on one of the sides because it's the freeway. So a lot of cars just parking there because there is no home. They park all the time, during the day, during the nighttime. They always leave trash, because the winds always blow towards my front yard, all the tries, all the trash, and some my front yard. I always constantly picking the trash, gross things that you can never imagine what the things that I've been picking up from my front yard. So I don't know, I really, really would appreciate it if you take on consideration, how unsafe do we feel? At least my family, at least myself. Because as a mother, seeing a child being, you know, treated with such a dangerous thing, I mean, I'm worried, I'm worried. When I go somewhere, I always worry. I always worry that one of my kids is home and something's gonna happen. So thank you for listening.
Mayor Yokoyama, may I add something?
Sure.
If the council would like, us speaking with Captain Strong here, we could reassign one of the pending ALPR cameras that was slated to go at the off-ramp by the town center and relocate it here in Phase 2 up by 166 and Studebaker, if the council prefers that.
That's in the part, that's in the PowerPoint for item 9C1?
Yes. So the camera we're talking about was actually gonna go in to the off-ramp there by the town center, where you come off the 91 freeway. But that's, that can be moved or reallocated, if you would, to 166 and Studebaker into the residential area. And then we would replace that camera in Phase 3 instead of Phase 2.
Which location are we, you proposing we change?
Well, we'd be moving it from the 91 right there-
Can you just go up and point?
Yes. How about if I, I don't have a pointer here, but this is a commercial area, and so this is the off-ramp right by the town center.
Okay.
Just relocate the camera and equipment here up into this area. We do have Phase 2 instead of waiting till Phase 3.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this agenda item?
My name is Yasmin Cortez. Good, oh, don't get a little timer. My name is Yasmin Cortez. I'm here today to speak in favor of a temporary closure of Spinnaker entrance for the Morning Sun neighborhood for a temporary period of four months, just to assess the impact of crime and the safety in our community. For some of you guys who are new to the council, maybe you may have not heard directly from the Morning Sun residents about the concerns we face. Many of my neighbors, including myself, strongly support this temporary closure as an important step in improving the safety and security of our community. We are scared, frustrated, and tired of the crime. We are doing our part, but something different has to be done. So if it's a closure, or if it's the change of the machine, the license plate reader, anything would be great to see what can be different. As Mel mentioned, we don't have as many of our residents here tonight as they are nervous of leaving their homes vulnerable, but we hear their voices in person, we hear them at neighborhood watch meetings, we run polls in our WhatsApp group, and we have chats, and we're here to represent their voices. Our neighborhood has three entrances, which is a little different from the other neighborhood. And while Spinnaker is not as heavily used by our residents, as it only allows a left turn into the neighborhood and a left turn onto Studebaker, it has often been used as a hotspot for people coming off the main road, off the freeway, and it provides a quick exit to major routes like 166 to 605 and to Normack. This makes this a particularly appealing area, as you heard, some people just come in, they hang out, they leave their trash, and a lot of their fast entrance and exits are undetected. Given this location and limited access, it's become a vulnerable part, and we would like to do, we would like you guys to consider to do something about the crime right now. During this time of this temporary closure, and I want to urge again, this is a temporary closure, it's not permanent, so it's definitely worth a try, we can talk to our neighbors, evaluate whether this reduces the activity and improves the safety by allowing us to focus on two entrances. I urge the council to approve or consider different measures to help during this four month trial, so we can better improve the safety of our city and my neighborhood. We're here because we care. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on Agenda Item 9C1? Okay, let's bring it back to the council. Is there any, any comments from my council colleagues on item 9C1? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in full support of any abatement measures, crime abatement measures for our residents, including temporary or permanent street closures. I'm also considering feedback from the residents of the 230 homes in Morning Sun Track. But based on guidance from JPIA, it would be prudent of this council to do a full traffic study prior to any temporary or permanent street closure, and to complete an extensive public outreach campaign, and to be mindful that as a council, we want to make sure we do not subject the city to any liability, and the measures recommended by JPIA would be a prudent way to move forward, if that is the will of this council.
Anything else? Do my council, any of my other council colleagues have any comments?
I-
Councilmember Hong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I just, I know probably, I know your request because if you think there's three end, you know, exit and entrance, closed one would be the best solution. But as personally, I was really, I like what our community safety manager, Darryl, was and Captain Strong was talking about. Can we try to work out the same way that we resolved the other place and see how it works? You know, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Councilmember Palito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to the residents. I could empathize with your situation. Mr. Cortez, when you say that there's no trailer, we are the trailer, I relate to that personally, generationally. That mindset is what I was raised with because my father was our neighborhood watch captain. And I don't sleep at night fully, any bump in the night, any sound. Because on my block, I am surrounded by widows. Some in their 90s. And if there's a bump in the night and it's not in my own backyard, but it's maybe a door down or two or three, I'm concerned about that. And I'm not the only one. People on my block, people around my block, people in the neighborhood. So I understand that. So I could really empathize with how you feel and how your neighbors feel. And I also understand that however they may feel, they don't want to come out at night in order to talk about it. They just expect action. And I also understand the caution that we have to exercise because we're the government agency that has to look at liability. We have to look at what exposure we have. So I think doing the necessary studies, as my colleague Ms. Johnson had mentioned, I look forward to that. I think we need to do our due diligence as you're doing your due diligence and advocating. And good for you, keep advocating. And good on us to educate ourselves and equip ourselves to the full range of options that we have to consider. I want to thank Mr. Evans for being nimble, right on the spot, being able to say, hey, Mr. Cortez, if you said, you know, if there's not going to be a closure, can we get a trailer? But can we fast track it and have it moved here sooner? And right there, Mr. Evans, you saw it, right there. That is a public servant who is being attentive, who is listening and being responsive. And I want to acknowledge that and hope that that type of responsiveness can be emulated. So I want to support Ms. Johnson's. You're asking for concurrence or is it a motion?
If it's appropriate, then I'd like to make a motion.
If it's appropriate, I'd love to second it.
Okay. Yeah, my motion then would be to have, to follow guidance as recommended by JPIA, to do a traffic, full traffic study and to complete an extensive public outreach campaign to the residents in that tract.
And I'm proud to second that. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that would also include the change of the Phase Three ALPR located Spinnaker exit to 166 and Studebaker?
To include that as well.
I love that. I second that especially.
Thank you.
And the motion passes on a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. I asked for consensus from my colleagues to reorder the agenda to hear, let's hear 9D next ahead of 9B. Do I have consensus?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Item 9D, City Manager, do we have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 9D is an overview of the budget process for the current fiscal year and for the upcoming fiscal year as we enter into the budget season. The presentation will be given by Director of Administrative Services Drew Schneider and also Finance and Budget Manager Peter Kemp. Any questions can be answered by them and other members of the team. Mr. Schneider?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. It is my pleasure to join you this evening to discuss our budget process, give you a bit of an overview of how we got here and a bit of a outlook as to the next steps in the process. So if we wanted to take a moment to step back, just a few months ago, this past December, the City Council adopted our revised and newly updated treaty plan. This was a product of a multi-month effort involving engagement with more than 140 community members, 75 survey results from 75 staff members, more than 10,000 online engagements, and a series of really important in-depth conversations, both here in front of the City Council, along with staff and in various community engagement sessions. As an outcome of this effort, we developed a eight, if you would go to the next slide, please. We developed these eight goals that were adopted by the City Council in priority order. Each of them reflects important priorities from the community. Also, along the same timeframe, we developed two very important policy updates that guide our development of our budget process. First, our financial reserve policy ensures that we have clear guidance to the budget staff, along with clear parameters and guardrails to ensure that we have both the financial flexibility we need in order to fund our essential city programs while preserving our legacy for the future of Ceritos. In addition, pardon me, do I want to go back? Thank you. In addition, we partnered with our colleague, my colleague Alvin Papa, the Director of Public Works, to develop a CIP prioritization process that reflects a risk-based approach in ensuring that the most important projects that buy down our risks and serve our community in the most meaningful ways. in the most meaningful ways receive funding priority. Next slide, please. I'm going to now turn it over to our Budget and Finance Manager slash City Treasurer, Peter Kemp, to deliver the next steps of our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider and Mr. Lopez, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So what I'd like to go over with you right now is our budget process and some of the milestones that we've been through so far in the budget process this year, and some of the upcoming milestones that we're approaching and will help us kind of finalize the process here. So the budget process is a month-long endeavor, and it really starts quite early in the fiscal year. Our first kind of official kickoff is with the aforementioned strategic planning session this year that was held on November 4th, 2024, but the process really began earlier with the, our consultant that helped lead this process with their community outreach efforts and input from the council and staff and the community here. Following the strategic planning session, we have our first of three budget study sessions that was held in December, on December 12th, 2024. That session is primarily focused on adopting the strategic plan and the actionable objectives that go along with each of those goals. So following that session, once we have an adopted strategic plan and staff has kind of their overall directives from the City Council, staff can go back and start developing department budget proposals for the preliminary budget. That happens during December and January and even into early February, and that culminates with a mid-year review with the City Manager, and this is where departments present both their mid-year adjustments as well as their proposals for the upcoming fiscal year to the City Manager and to the budget team. There are some in-depth conversations, those budget proposals are aligned against available resources and fine-tuned, and that culminates in the mid-year amendments. We had some CIP amendments that actually went to council tonight on our consent calendar, and then last council meeting, we had some operational revenue expenditure amendments, and that's where we really just look at fine-tuning our expenditure estimates for the current fiscal year, and again, making sure that those align with the available resources and the revised revenue projections. So following the proposal development, we start putting together our preliminary budget document and getting ready to present that to the council. That is typically, it is typically published in early May, May 2nd is our deadline for publishing the preliminary budget, and that's when the council and the public and everybody has a chance to review that document, and that is followed by the subsequent budget study sessions in May and June. This is the time where the council can really dive in deep to the budget, give staff additional directives, and really kind of fine-tune what we want to do based on the available resources and community priorities. And that entire process culminates at the end of June, prior to the beginning of the fiscal year with the adoption of the final budget. So I talked about the mid-year adjustments a little bit, and we did want to kind of touch base on that just a little bit, particularly as it relates to the revenue adjustments and some trends that we've been seeing over the last couple of years and kind of foresee continuing into the next couple of years. We did have some revenue decreases overall with our budget for this year compared to what we had adopted back in June of last year. Overall, our general fund revenue adjustments were lowered by $1.2 million. That was primarily driven by revised sales tax forecast. Enterprise funds, which include our water and sewer reclaimed water and electric utility funds, revenue adjustments were $2.5 million down from our adopted budget. Overall revenue, citywide, this is all fund types, we're looking at approximately $1 million in reduced revenues based on our revised forecast. As I mentioned, this is primarily driven by a reduction in sales tax revenue. Our sales tax is, as the council is aware, it's our largest source of revenue. It accounts for approximately 50% of our general fund revenues and about a third of citywide revenues. So I did want to talk about that just briefly here, just so we kind of know what to expect heading into this kind of final stretch of the budget season here. So this slide is a history, kind of a brief history of recent year's sales tax, as well as the updated forecast for the current fiscal year and our preliminary forecast for next fiscal year, '25, '26. The updated forecast for fiscal year '24, '25, that's our current year, is $43.8 million. That's approximately $2.2 million lower than the amount that was included in the adopted budget. These forecasts do come from our sales tax consultant, HCL Companies. They are the leading experts in this field, and they service, I believe, almost 90% of the agencies in California, so they do a lot of work to provide these projections. And while we don't like to see the decreases like this, we're grateful for the accuracy that they provided us in the past years. This downward adjustment is primarily driven by a continued decline in auto sales. Auto sales account for about a third of that sales tax revenue that we receive, and this is kind of a reflection of high vehicle costs and high financing costs and just a reduction in consumer demand at the moment. We've seen about eight consecutive quarters of decline in this sector to this point right now. So you can see, sales tax has been pretty flat. While we are seeing, are projecting a modest rebound for next fiscal year, the revenues that we're looking at, $45.7 million for next fiscal year, that still remains below the peak that we had in fiscal year '22, '23 coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic when a sales tax was at $46.7 million. So what's next in the process here? Well, staff is currently working to kind of finalize those departmental budget proposals for the upcoming fiscal year and prepare the preliminary budget document. You know, as we kind of face the reality of stagnant revenues and increased service costs, we are focusing on preserving some of the core services that our residents expect and maintaining long-term financial sustainability. The new financial policies, which Mr. Schneider highlighted earlier, these will serve as very important tools, helping to guide the responsible use of reserves and prioritize our capital investments. And once that preliminary budget document is published and we get into those final two budget study sessions, the council feedback during those sessions will be critical in shaping the final budget document. That said, barring any major setbacks, we are on track to present the final budget for adoption on June 26th of this year. That concludes our presentation. Myself, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Lopez are available for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Peter. Do my council colleagues have any questions regarding Agenda Item 9D? Okay, seeing no questions, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, let's bring you back to the council. Does the council have any comments? Anybody, do any of my council colleagues have any comments? Okay, I have some, I have some things. Thanks, Peter. So regarding that, that revenue snapshot, number slide six? You know, you told us that the update is that our general fund revenue adjustment is minus 1.2 million, right there on that, on that slide.
Oh yeah, that's correct, for the current fiscal year.
For the current fiscal year, the adjustment you're updating us tonight is minus 1.2 million. So the next slide, slide seven, it says that sales tax revenue to the city is down 2.2 million. So can you clarify why our general fund revenue adjustment for tonight is minus 1.2 million, but the adjustment for sales tax revenue, it went down $1 million more than that? Minus 2.2 million?
Sure, thank you for your question, Mr. Mayor. So the slide that we're looking at right now with our sales tax, this is specific to just our sales tax revenue. As I mentioned, this does account for about 50% of our general fund revenues. The figure given in the slide previous to this, down 1.2 million is overall general fund revenue. So what that's essentially saying is other revenues have gone up slightly or have remained intact. The other 50% of that kind of equation, we have had some slight increases in other revenues. So the focus here on this slide was sales tax because it is our largest single source of revenue, but of the many other sources of revenues, there were other increases. So, you know, we're not saying that every revenue source has gone down, but certainly our biggest one has. So the net, the net adjustment to our overall general fund revenues was 1.2 million, but that was largely driven by this decrease in sales tax revenue.
I expected to hear your explanation. Thank you for confirming it, for clarifying it. So I'm very curious, why did our revenues other than sales tax revenue increase by 1 million? What accounts for the 1 million increase in the sales, in the general fund revenue adjustment? What is that $1 million that we unexpectedly got, other than the sales tax revenue of our general fund revenue?
Sure, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. So I don't have all of the revenue detail in front of me now, but we do have, there are a couple of things I can point out. One in particular, and this is kind of, kind of a conflicting thing with our sales tax situation here, and we talked about high interest rates a little bit, which have a negative effect on our, part of our sales tax revenue, particularly these high-ticket items like auto sales. Conversely, that does have a positive impact on our cash investments. So most of the city's cash is invested in a robust fixed income portfolio, and as those interest rates have risen, our returns on that portfolio have risen as well. So as older investments that we've had have matured with lower interest rates, and we've reinvested that into higher interest rate securities, we've seen that investment income rise quite a bit over the last year or two. So I can say with certainty that a large portion of that offset is from our investment portfolio. But we do have many other revenue sources, and like I said, I don't have the specifics in front of me now, but we could certainly look into that and get back to you with some more specifics.
Yeah, because, yeah, because we're talking about $1 million. So I'd like to have clarity.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Okay, thank you, Drew.
I can provide a little bit more detail. So if we go back to the council report we submitted back on March 13th, I believe, it does provide a detailed breakdown of all the modifications to the budget, including the additional revenues. I can highlight some of the items here that were increases. As Peter referenced before, we had a $400,000 increase in interest income based upon those cash values that we had. Our motor vehicle and lieu reimbursements increased by $500,000. It's just some of the examples of some of the larger dollar figures in there. There are also offsets of decreased revenues, so it is a mixed bag there, but the net impact is that that did offset a great deal of that $2.2 million in lost sales tax revenue, or unexpected decrease in sales tax revenue. So there is a detailed listing of all those revenues in that previous council report, and we can...
And if I may add, that council report is actually attached to tonight's Item 9D. Specifically, the revenues can be found on pages 80 through 82 of the current staff report. And that's, it's a, basically, it's an informational attachment that has the previous staff report attached.
Yeah, and 80, pages 80 to 82?
If I can add some, just additional clarification, this includes both expenditure and revenue adjustments. So you'll note in that first column on the left, the revenues will start here on page 81. So pages 81 and 82 are the revenue adjustments.
Well, actually, the revenue...
Actually, starting on page 80, I apologize.
So if we look at the revenues that start at the bottom of page 80 and ending on page 82, if we add all of those up, it equals a net minus 1.2 million.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, thank you. So we have a lot of great detail here. Thank you for pointing that out. So I'd like to please address some budget items for the '24, '25 budget. I'd like to make a motion that the City Council Conference Travel Expense Line Item, City Council Conference and Travel Expenses Line Item be a lump sum, be made a lump sum amount. It's $50,000 in the budget right now, the '24, '25 budget, it's $50,000. And my motion is to make that line item amount of $50,000 a lump sum pot for the City Council to use for their attendance at conferences and the related travel expenses.
Second?
And if I could clarify, currently, there is a total of $50,000, but it's allocated on a per council member basis of 10,000 each, obviously equating plus, you know, the five, that's 50,000. I believe your motion is to consolidate that and use it as a lump sum for any of the council members until that fund is exhausted, so it's not 10,000 per, correct?
Yeah, instead of 10,000 per council member for a total of 50,000, it is just a lump sum of 50,000. So the line item remains at 50,000.
Got it, thank you.
So we had a motion and a second?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the purpose of that? What's the difference? Why would you make this kind of suggestion? Can I hear more detail, please?
Yes, so the City Council attends conferences, and there's conference expenses and travel expenses, and I don't, it's my opinion, it's my position, that council members who want to go to conference, choose to go to conferences to represent our city, to advocate for our city, to try to get grants and try to get funding, whether it's state funding or federal funding or county funding, they should be able to attend, choose to attend to conferences and attend to conferences without concerns about a arbitrary $10,000 limit. It's been my experience over the last two years that this selfish limitation that was imposed on council members who choose to go to conferences by, by a mayor who went to nothing, he went to no conferences, that petty partisan limitation hurts our city because, for example, because council member, Mayor Pro Tem Linda Johnson and I would attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC multiple times. We've advocated to our Congress member, Michelle Steele, for federal funding for our Del Amo Bridge project, as an example. Michelle Steele, Michelle Steele's office submitted our request for federal funding, and we got $5 million from a federal funding for the Del Amo Bridge project. And it was timely and it was important, because if we didn't get it when we got it, right now, the federal government is not funding the money they said they were going to give for the fiscal year '25. So when we're talking about getting $5 million from the federal government, and we're sitting here talking about $10,000 on whether or not we should let our council members go to conferences where we see other cities like Artesia and Lakewood and, and Brea attending these conferences and getting state funding and federal funding for our cities, we need to have a seat at the table, and we need to get that $5 million in federal funding from Michelle Steele, because Linda Johnson and I attended a conference in Washington DC and met with Michelle Steele in her office on Capitol Hill and came back with $5 million. a conference in Washington DC and met with Michelle Steele in her office on Capitol Hill and came back with five million dollars.
Thank you for the explanation. So my understanding what you're trying to say, okay, our total lump sum is still fifty thousand, right? It just depends on who attend more conference and they just the expenditure would be higher than that the councilman doesn't have to go to the certain conference. So it's just like, because your total is still the same. It's just before it's limited. Each one is the same. Right now, you're trying to say, okay, it's lump sum together and then depends on your job duty or your ambition to go. And then so you can just take it all from the same pot. Am I understanding correct? Maybe I'm kind of first time meeting. Please bear with me. Thank you.
Yeah, City Manager, do you want to explain?
Yes, thank you. As was mentioned, as currently adopted with the budget, there is a limitation per council member of ten thousand dollars. That was the action taken by the council at the time. And as the suggestion of that, what's, what's being proposed is to basically consolidate it all. Staff can and, and in implementation of that, staff has on a quarterly basis provided the city council an update as far as where each council member is at within their ten thousand dollar allocation. What staff could instead do with this proposal is to provide still an update quarterly on the lump sum total, and the council can then be mindful of how much is available for the rest of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
I'll point out that, you know, I've been on the city council since two thousand seventeen. And maybe Councilmember Polito would like to share his experience. But I've been on the council, city council since two thousand seventeen. And up until two thousand twenty three, there was never this individual council member limitation. But I would attend conferences, take out time from my personal life, take out time away from my family, from my wife and my kids. And I'd go to conferences to advocate for the city of Cerritos to represent the needs of our residents, to ask for federal funding, to ask for state funding, just like I did earlier this month when I went to National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, and I met with Derek, Congressmember Derek Tran. And I met with State Senator Adam Schiff, and I made with, met with, I met with United States Senator Adam Schiff. And I met with United States Senator Padilla. And I also had a chance to have a, a quick meeting with Congressmember Judy Chu. And the effort is to let them know that Cerritos is present, we're at the table, and we're trying to get help for our city and for our residents as opposed to them not even knowing who Cerritos is. And since two thousand seventeen, it has been a lump, when I got on the council in two thousand seventeen, it was a lump sum for all of the council members who are willing to put in that extra time and serve our city and go to these conferences and advocate to our state leaders and to our federal leaders, whether it's in Sacramento or Washington DC. And then for some reason, the majority in two thousand twenty three cut it from a lump sum to individual council member budgets. It was a petty partisan selfish maneuver because they didn't like Councilmember Johnson and myself representing our city. They'd rather us not represent our city. Because they weren't going. Councilmember Polito, you were on the city council starting in two thousand eleven. Was there a lump sum for council members to attend conferences, or was it individual budgets?
I don't remember a cap for individual council members, and in fact, your question was going, going to be my question when I press my button here. I, I wanted to find out when this was done and had it ever previously been done. Because the time that I got on the council in two thousand eleven, all the way till twenty twenty, that's nine straight years, there was no such limitation. So do we have an answer for that?
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, on June twenty seven, twenty twenty four, with the adoption of this fiscal year's budget, there was a minute motion and action taken by the council to institute this policy that requires a council member who is near reaching an excess of ten thousand dollars in expenditures, expenditures to acquire council approval prior to exceeding the ten thousand dollar allotment.
Okay, so it was last year, what, what?
June twenty seven.
June. And, and when was the decision to, to push the term and, and push the election? Was that a year ago? What, what, what was the year on that?
That was April twenty twenty three, I believe. I would have to double check that.
Okay. And in the previous sixty eight years of the city's existence, to our knowledge, there's never been?
Not to my knowledge, council member.
There's never been what?
There's never been a, a limitation on travel?
Individual council member limitations?
On individual council members, yes.
No, council member, not that I am aware of.
That, so that, that helps me go beyond my, my memory. Because my memory was that there's way in excess of ten thousand dollars spent by council members when I was on a council. I think there were news articles on it. There were public records requests on it. I just find it ironic that as folks are deciding to leave, that they decide to impose another limitation to tie the hands of future council members in their ability to advocate for the regional, state and national interests of Cerritos. Now, it's one thing if people decide to abdicate their own duty, but to constrain the powers of the duly elected, democratically elected leaders, future leaders. Again, I think that's what we call an overreach. So thank you for illuminating this for me, Mr. Mayor. Because I wholeheartedly agree. Now, this doesn't change how much we're going to spend, it's still going to be fifty thousand. But it's going to go to the folks who are representing us. Because I think on, later on this agenda, we're going to be talking about who's going to be representing us before the League of Cities, before the US Conference of Mayors, before Contract Cities, you know, all of these entities that we are supposed to be actively involved with. Instead of just acting like an island and just sticking our head in the sand and not realizing that a lot of these issues that we talk about, like public safety, like housing, like transportation, like transit, like air quality, like goods movement, all of these are regional issues that aren't solved just by sitting here talking to ourselves. Or actually, there was a lot of not talking to ourselves. Okay? And then, like I said, I will use the word again, abdicating our duty to be at the table where these discussions are being made with all the other gateway cities. So I got a problem with that. It's a new day, folks. I support you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I guess my question is, I have no doubt about the integrity and all the efforts. Of course, we're here, we all have the heart to serve. That's not my major question. I think my key point is, okay, is fifty thousand dollars is a realistic number? Okay, I don't mind if separate or together, it doesn't matter to me. So what I'm saying is, okay, if we keep on chipping into this and then until we find out like, okay, we still have like two, three months, we have to go, but we're out of money, out of budget. So at that time, what are we going to do? If that happens. It doesn't matter who, who spend it, it doesn't matter. We can have like whoever goes more, they spend more money. That's reasonable. I have no problem with that, but it's just like, how are you budgeting, you know?
City Manager, you want to answer that?
So as I mentioned, we could provide, staff can provide the council with an ongoing periodic update regarding the balance on that line item. And depending on direction from council, if there's an overwhelming interest, there can be an amendment as needed at the direction of the council, or decisions can be made to limit travel collectively based on needs and priorities for the council.
Actually, actually, that fifty thousand was increased just recently. Yeah. And I don't think we've ever gone over the fifty thousand collectively.
Okay, can I, Mayor?
Councilmember Say.
I'm looking at two way, okay, and we're talking about budget cutting, we're running a negative for the next twenty, twenty five to twenty twenty six. Fifty thousand dollars as compared to other charter hospital or a charter city, what is the average about other city? What I heard from my, my council member here at the city, I mean, I look at the positive ways they bring the revenue back, which is very good. The relationship with the elected official to build a relationship and bring some remedy back, which is positive. But fifty thousand dollar in the past, have we ever exhausted in the past?
I'll begin by noting that while the current fiscal year budget for city council travel is fifty thousand, the prior fiscal year budget was forty five thousand. There was a change made in the last adoption to increase that. But looking back in prior years, I'll defer to our team to find out whether or not there's been how close we've gotten.
Good evening. That's one of the items we would have to go back and research and provide a report back to the council.
What about other cities? You know, apparently, what I heard, the other city, they all can go there because I always feel sometime when you, the budget for us to go out, to listen and learn and bring it back to another level of what we serve to the community. That's a positive side I'm looking at. But if we never exhausted, okay, and then some people will go to certain important meeting and where other people are not going to, then the pot fifteen thousand dollar we can share, that's how I see it. But again, I need to know what happened in the past. You know, we have five council member in the past, and every single one extracted money for fifty because you went off on forty five thousand to five, fifty thousand, right? So there must be, there's a need to increase. But now we're on the table here discussing, will we share or shouldn't share? The previous council member say, hey, everyone has to owe money at ten thousand dollar. But that person, ten thousand dollar, won't act, not able to spend it. Then this money just lost? Or what's happening when other people can go for? For example, I spent five thousand, right? And I went to certain conferences I like to go to learn, but I have another five thousand dollar. I'm not using that. What are you going to do with that five thousand dollar?
I'm going to call the question.
Okay, okay, that's fine. You want to vote for that, right? I just need, want to need to hear the staff talking about.
Okay, the question was called, City Clerk, can you activate the voting? I, I have, so this, my motion was to make the travel, the conference and travel expense budget a lump sum available to the Cerrito City Council of fifty thousand for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year and get rid of the individual council member limitation of ten thousand.
Okay.
That was my motion. It was seconded by Mayor Protem Johnson?
That's correct.
Okay, let's vote. I have it up on my screen, but I don't see it on my colleague's screens.
I don't have my screen in here.
And I can call for a roll call if you like. Councilmember Hong? Councilmember Polito?
Council colleague, she's doing a roll.
We're having technical difficulties. Councilmember Say.
You know, I will for yes this time, but I want to wait and see towards next year and see how we spend and do we really need it or not need it then. So I save that. So definitely yes for now, up to now.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Yokuyama?
Yes.
And the motion passes on a vote of four to one. This was included in a prior resolution, so we will bring back a conforming resolution to memorialize the action that occurred today.
I will please report back, I will please make a provide some information for the fiscal year that ended June thirty, twenty twenty four. The city council travel and meeting expense total was approximately thirty two thousand dollars. Okay. Another motion I'd like to make is effective immediately. The budget is cut to zero for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, effective immediately. The budget is cut to zero for the Cerritos Chamber of Commerce.
Second, and I have comments.
Okay, go ahead and make your comments.
I embrace the work of all of our nonprofit organizations that help support our city by voting on a budget that provides grants to help them succeed. However, in the last couple of years, I have questioned the fund requests made by the Cerritos Chamber of Commerce because of the lack of information we have received from them, including their financial documents. At the June twelfth, twenty twenty three meeting, a majority of the council, except for the mayor and I, voted to appropriate sixty two thousand dollars to the chamber conditioned upon the requirement that the chamber submit a business plan in a formal deemed satisfactory, that in a format deemed satisfactory to the city by July twenty twenty three. And if the business plan was not submitted as described, the amount of the funds would be reduced to forty thousand for the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. The chamber did comply, they submitted their business plan. It was a plan that I found to be unacceptable, and it was obvious that it was not prepared by a professional. Anyone can request a copy of this and see it for themselves. However, their plan was accepted, and the chamber was able to continue to receive the sixty two thousand dollars in grant funds. At the June twenty seven, two thousand twenty four meeting, I brought it up again that the funding to the chamber was excessive, especially since they lacked the adequate business plan, and they were not transparent with their financial reports. All other organizations that apply for these community grant funds are required to submit a financial report, and it just boggles my mind that we make an exception to this chamber, especially for the unprecedented amount that they are asking for. I know of no other city in our region or elsewhere that funds a chamber at a price of sixty two thousand dollars a year. However, the majority of that council, except for the mayor and I, voted to continue funding the chamber at sixty two thousand dollars a year. So now here we are again, going into fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. The chamber no longer has an executive director. The chamber no longer leases office space. The chamber no longer produces a state of the city. The chamber no longer does a taste of the region, but yet they are still getting sixty two thousand dollars till the end of this fiscal year of twenty four, twenty five. Just recently, within the last few weeks, the chamber submitted a business plan. This time, one that excludes an expense budget. They're asking for an expense budget of an executive director salary, marketing and advertising costs, website development, program development, event expenses, doesn't even end there. It's also asking for a financial assistance to pay an outstanding debt of eight thousand dollars of past due rent. What did they do with the sixty two thousand that they had already, we had already given them? So with all that, the chamber is now asking eighty thousand dollars as an annual request to the city. The chamber is not a city liability. They should be able to stand on their own, pay their own director's salary, pay for their own rent, pay for their office expenses. Grant funding is not to be used to run an organization. I know I may sound harsh or unsympathetic to their situation, but they have board members, board members that are business owners or business entities. They must have known that there was something wrong with their financials in the last few years, especially if they are charged with approving budgets submitted to their director, submitted by their director. So I'm not. So I'm not inclined to approve any further funding to this chamber until they get it together. I actually find it insulting to our residents that they would ask another eighteen thousand dollars more on top of the sixty-two thousand dollars that they can't account for, especially since they no longer have a director and that they have to pay their outstanding debt. I encourage them to start fresh, have a plan, develop a revenue stream that's more realistic. So yes, Mayor, I second your motion.
Mayor? May I have a question, please?
Yes, yes, councilmember Hong.
I wasn't, not quite about the history or anything, but I'm just looking at the way it's like, who's auditing that? When we give them the grant, or are they just auditing by themselves, or the city, or who's, who's watching them? I mean, all the organization, if we're funding them, somebody got to be watching them, right? We should be auditing, unless we have no right to audit.
City manager, can you respond to that?
Yes, thank you, there are a number of community groups that receive funding from the city, the chamber being one, several other groups for specific programs. I'll defer to Annie Hilton, the Director of Community Cultural Services. The Community Services Division oversees the distribution of that funding to the various community groups, and she can provide additional insight.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and thank you for the question, Councilwoman Hong. On an annual basis, typically, the community organizations that the city funds submit an application, and they typically will outline the services that they provide to the community, and they provide statistics about the number of residents who are served through their services. And then staff then incorporates that in the budget proposal on an annual basis. And the Chamber of Commerce typically will submit a letter to the city, and they did respond as the council had requested with a budget plan. And the monitoring, essentially during the year, we do see the activities that they offer. And they are going through a period of not having paid staff at this time. So it is not something that the city has ever required ongoing sort of reports or statistics from the Chamber of Commerce. It's just been an entity that the city has supported for many years for their business outreach and services.
Thank you, so now that they are in financial trouble and basically they need to be shut down if they don't get a grant, right? So our city is not gonna have a Chamber of Commerce? I mean, we're a city of Cerritos, you know? I was kinda worried about that, if a city without Chamber of Commerce. I'm trying to find a solution, you know?
I hear you, councilmember, and there's other ways. They can collaborate with other chambers, but they need to find a way to build up revenue. They cannot lean on the city for eighty thousand dollars as an annual request. Annie, can you please tell us, what is the average request of these nonprofit organizations? The average request, like from the Optimist Club, the Sore Optimist Club?
Most of the other organizations, it's a smaller amount.
Yeah, less than ten thousand, less than five thousand dollars. And here we are at eighty-two, eighty, eighty thousand dollars.
What kind of, is that, they're FIOIC or LLC or what?
I don't think that matters, they're taking money from the city to pay their debt.
What I'm looking at, I agree with you, you know, they have to find a way to survive themselves. But I'm also looking at the other side, it's, okay, we only grant you for sixty thousand dollars. And you need to find a way to make survival yourself, you know? It's just like, you know, people are helping you, the social security give you twenty, two thousand dollar every month. But you're gonna spend four thousand dollar, you're gonna have to find out how you're gonna get the additional two thousand. Is that what you're thinking? I understand that, but now that you're talking about taking sixty thousand dollar away, I'm trying to say, can we say, hey, this is it? Take the offer or leave it, we're not gonna give you increase. You have to find a way to make up the difference, or find a way to survive, or like you suggested, they have to combine with other city. You know, if they want to continue. I just hate to see a city without Chamber of Commerce, or they have to go to the, you know, other business company to try to get more funding or donation, whatever. Thank you.
Do any of my council colleagues have any other?
Mayor, I have a question.
You have a question, okay, councilmember Sei?
Is this an obligation for a city to support some organization?
The, there's no obligation, the city receives these requests annually, and it's at the discretion of the city council to fund budget accordingly. Different cities have different relationships with chambers. Some have contracts for specific programs and services. Others, there's more of a grant contribution, more broadly applied. There's different arrangements that could be made, but there's no obligation, but the city has no contractual obligation to provide funding.
So we don't have an obligation to fund those organizations?
Not at this time, it's up to the priorities of the city and what programs and services the city would like to help support.
I'd love to, I'd love to help them, but however, like council mayor Protem mentioned, when from sixty-five thousand go up to eighty thousand dollar, without any itemized things, how much they spend, where the money goes to, then that's like a hose in there, this hose get bigger and bigger. Here, we have a lot of issues here already there, so maybe we should not give them much and give us still support, you know, we wanna support business, that's the purpose that we are, sales tax. Then, cutting that to the, to the bone, maybe it's not very good. Then we need to consider this amount, but I have to be be able to, I think they need to identify the issue, they need to find the funding, because business people, I believe somewhere they can also get some donation a year, that's, I know some people running the election, they can get about fifty thousand dollars by business people, so.
But you know, councilmember, I'm sorry, but
Go ahead.
We've been going through this for the past three years. And they've always said they're gonna get money, they're gonna get money. Now they're asking money to pay their debt, they have debt. That's insulting to our residents that we have to pay the debt to the chamber, the debt of the chamber.
You guys let him go?
No, I'm saying they're asking money to, they have rent that they no longer pay, but there is past due rent that is due, that's debt.
I got nothing to say.
I have a question. The money that the city of Cerritos is giving to the Cerritos Chamber of Commerce every month, that money is coming out of the general fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct, it is budgeted out of the Community Services Division.
And that is general fund money?
Yes, that is correct.
That is our Cerritos taxpayer dollar money. And we, the city council, have a fiscal responsibility to take care of our taxpayer dollars, our Cerritos resident taxpayer dollars, and make sure that it is spent transparently, and it is spent in a way that we can, we can go to the residents and justify that we spent their, their taxpayer dollars. And for the reasons detailed by Mayor Protem Johnson, I can't in good conscience look at the residents and say, we are being fiscally responsible with your taxpayer dollars when we give this money to the Cerritos Chamber of Commerce. And I do wanna point out that my motion is not depriving them of over sixty thousand dollars. We've already given them already forty-five thousand dollars this fiscal year. And, and I have not seen a return on that over forty-five thousand dollars. That's been, you know, I'm, I, I feel embarrassed to have to try to somehow explain to the Cerritos residents that we gave the chamber over forty-five thousand dollars of their taxpayer dollars this fiscal year. So my motion is only affecting fifteen thousand dollars for this twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
Mayor, I have one more question, I need to ask, what's the staff recommendation here? I know we make policy, but you hired the people who work for you.
Okay.
We don't have a recommendation on this one.
This is not, this is not an agendized item specifically about the chamber. It was an agendized item about the twenty-four, twenty-five budget and the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so.
So what would you suggest? You made a motion and seconded by Nina Johnson, what is the recommendation here?
My recommendation is the motion that I made.
Let's call the question, I call the question.
I will clarify what the motion is.
Please.
Basically, it is to no longer fund for the rest of this fiscal year the amount that was allocated to the Chamber of Commerce. We had already expended forty-five thousand of the sixty thousand dollar budget. So for the remainder of this fiscal year, there is fifteen thousand dollars in addition that is supposed to go to them. The motion on the floor that has been seconded is to stop the funding of the additional fifteen thousand.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Polito?
Thank you. I appreciate the motion, councilmember Johnson. Again, having been a private citizen for the past five years, this discussion has been illuminating. I was going through my, my memory, and I think it was seven budget cycles ago, because my memory was at, I think it was Mayor Hu and councilmember Yokoyama and myself who augmented the chamber budget after they came. There were at least twenty or thirty of them at the budget study session, and they weren't happy with what they were getting, and they wanted more. And at that time, they made all the arguments, and we said, okay. We'll increase, because we wanted to demonstrate our continuing commitment to the chamber. But to hear just the litany of problems, I mean, I've, I've heard the rumors in town, but to hear it, hear this dais as we discuss the budget, it's embarrassing. And the fact that they don't have an executive director right now? I mean, it's just a little ironic, usually it's the business sector that is fiscally responsible and conservative, because their goal is the bottom line. And I think to the mayor's point, we're not seeing a return on our investment. Now, I don't know if in the past five years that there was some improvement. But I doubt, because of what I've been hearing over the past half decade. So I don't think this is a new problem, I think this is, has been a problem, and I think previous councils have, have not had the, the courage that councilmember Johnson has exhibited. Points well made. I support you on that, thank you.
May I have?
Councilmember Hong, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. What is the consequences? Why are we having a Chamber of Commerce for so many years? What, what are we, what are we expecting out of that? What are we, why we have supported them for so many years, and we never have a doubt? Are we expecting them to be a profit organization or just a service to the city? I want to look at that point, and my suggestion is maybe we still give them sixty thousand. And you, if you have to cut back your salary or don't hire people volunteer, you just have to survive, because I want to know, what is the Chamber of Commerce do it to our city? Are they making our business better, making our, the business owner happy? Because they can engage together, exchange business experience, or they have seminar, or something that make it works? Because I, I attend the meeting, sorry, Linda, I'm not, no, I always to the subject, yeah. I did, there do have a lot of people showing up, they always have like twenty, thirty people. And they were exchanging information, trying to promote their own information, you know, your, their own business. And I've seen other, I went to the Lakewood one as well, and they even have a bigger of Chamber of Commerce turn out. So I think it's just like a business, you know, like a promotional relationship kind of organization, because a lot of grant we give it to, you know, all the organization. Maybe they're smaller, and we don't expect the return, we just say, okay, here the grant for one thousand, do whatever you want, because we don't care about one thousand. But this one, we've been supporting how long, how many years? How can we say, people ask me, a lot of people from the business still say, what happened to a Chamber of Commerce? They love the taste of the, the Cerritos, you know, those kind of event. They think it's fun because it's time to promote their business. I'm just saying, we have to think, think about the consequences, because from my point of view, I see most of the city have a Chamber of Commerce. And they are functional, you know, maybe is the organization need to be reconstructed, we have to hire the right people, you know, do the right thing, but of course, we still have to tighten the budget. I don't, I agree with you, we cannot just keep on giving them more and more money. But I, I also don't like to live in the city without Chamber of Commerce.
With all due respect, councilmember Hong, I called the question. I've, I've called the question, thank you.
Okay, city clerk?
Councilmember Hong? Councilmember Polito?
Yes.
Councilmember Sei? Mayor, Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Yokoyama?
Yes.
Motion passes on a vote of four to one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, councilmember Polito.
I originally had some questions I wanted to deal with regarding this agenda report, but in the interest of time, I, I'd like to bring those up at a future budget study session. Is, is that allowable? Or?
Yeah, we are planning, and as was noted, we have a series of meetings that are planned in the next couple of months.
Okay.
And any question related to the budget that's presented at the time, we can discuss at that point.
Okay. I'd like to do that.
Councilmember Polito, the next budget study session is scheduled for May eighth, twenty-twenty-five. I invite you to make a decision, whatever you're comfortable with, if you wanna ask the questions now, or you could save it for a future meeting.
I, I, I'd like to move it, at least my concern, I, I'm, I believe the progress we made tonight already is substantial. And there are other items that I'd like to bring up relative to the next year's budget. But I also wanna have a, have fresh eyes on, on these issues.
I second it.
Okay. Oh, oh, I'm, I'm just, just saying that, I'm not going to bring them up now. Thank you.
So you, you, you want to wait for your questions until, at the earliest, the May eighth, twenty-twenty-five budget study session number two?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so does, do, do any of my colleagues have any other motions they would like to make for budget, for agenda item nine, ninety? Okay, so that's it, let's move on to item nine B. City manager, is there an agenda report?
I guess, thank you, for this item, I'll defer to city clerk, city Nava, to provide a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, honorable mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is consideration of the mayor's recommendations for appointments to internal ad hoc working groups and external boards, commissions and committees, and for community member service during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six mayoral term. In just a moment, the mayor will present his nominations, after which, staff recommends the city council receive public comment, then review, consider and approve by majority action Mayor Yokoyama's nominations for service appointments and direction to the city clerk to prepare and post an updated Fair Political Practices Commission Agency Report of Public Official Appointments Form eight oh six, and city appointments brochure to the city's website, and to coordinate the dissemination of contact information to the respective external bodies and appointees. This concludes my report, and I am available to answer any questions the city council may have. And this would be the appropriate time for the mayor to present his nomination.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comments. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for public comments. Are there any public comments on this agenda item nine B? Are there any public comments? Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Does the City Council have any questions about this agenda item nine B? Okay, I'm gonna treat this like we did the appointments in item nine A. I would like this to be a continuing agenda item until I fill up all my appointments as the mayor. As the mayor of the city of Cerritos, I'd like this to be a continuing agenda item, please. Until I fill up all the appointments, I'm gonna make some appointments tonight. I'm gonna propose some appointments tonight, and I will fill in the others at a future City Council meeting. So regarding the looking at exhibit one of Agenda Report nine B, looking at exhibit one, page five, first, the group, the ad hoc working group, Community Garden, I am eliminating that. So please remove that from the appointments list. City Clerk? So please remove Community Garden. And then for policy and procedure, the liaisons are Mayor Protem Linda Johnson and Councilmember Mark Palito. For protocol manual is Mayor Protem Linda Johnson and Councilmember Mark Palito. And that's it for the internal appointments. My intention is to make sure that the internal ad hoc working groups are represented by all of the council members. All of my council colleagues will be on ad hoc working groups, and I want to take the time to look through their requests, because I did get some of them earlier today. Okay, so for the external appointments, I'm making some appointments, not all of them. California Contract Cities Association Board of Directors, Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Sofia Say. California JPI Board of, California JPIA Board of Directors, Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Sofia Say. Gateway City Cog Board of Directors, Delegate Frank Yokoyama, alternate Mark Palito. Gateway City Cog Corridor Cities Committee, Delegate Frank Yokoyama, alternate Mark Palito. Gateway City Cog Southeast Gateway Line Corridor Cities Committee, Delegate Frank Yokoyama, alternate Mark Palito. Independent Cities Association Board of Directors, Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Jennifer Hong. League of California Cities and Cal Cities Los Angeles Regional Division Cerritos Representatives, Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Mark Palito. League of California Cities Twenty Twenty Five Annual General Assembly Meeting Voting Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Mark Palito. National League of Cities Twenty Twenty Five Annual Business Meeting Delegate Frank Yokoyama, alternate Mark Palito. Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board Policy Board Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Jennifer Hong. I skipped to page ten. Page ten, Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board Policy Board Delegate Linda Johnson, alternate Jennifer Hong. Southeast Water Coalition Joint Powers Authority Board of Directors Delegate Frank Yokoyama, alternate Jennifer Hong. SCAG General Assembly Member City Official Representative Delegate Frank Yokoyama, alternate Mark Palito. And those are the appointments I'm making at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have any questions from my council colleagues? Any comments from my council colleagues? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay, I have a question from Councilmember Sofia Say.
Apparently, is that the reason that we have Mayor Protem, Ms. Linda Johnson, and also my colleague here, Palito, I take the in many delegate, or me and Jennifer being do a lot of alternate? Is that the reason they take the lead, because they have experiences in the past? That's why they choose that way?
Can I? I express greater interest this time around. I, when I was first on the council, I had a very demanding job, actually, two jobs, you know, for US House of Representatives, as well as various state commissions. So I opted not to be involved in a lot of these regional groups, and I I expressed my interest to Mr. Mayor.
I do too.
My availability.
I do too. Actually, I turned my request way before to, I know at that time, Yokoyama, I'm humbly accepted, but I just wondered, because I also returned my in way before, about two weeks ago. And then you turning in today, so that was the reason I need to know, because some of the area I like to go to. Yeah, but I respect my mayor to make the decision. It was happened the last, I see the last year's council people who had happened before, I saw, and I feel bad about it. And I hopefully, that won't happen in the future. So that gives us all have a chance to take the lead and win the area. I humbly accepted today's offer. I don't, but I just wonder, for the future, we do need to practice equally, we're gonna talk about women's rights on today, not the rate. And I think we need to look into that. But like I just said, I humbly accepted your appointments. But I did give you my request two weeks ago.
Councilmember Say, if I could add?
Not a problem.
Yeah, you are welcome to attend any and all of these meetings and conferences. It is open to all five of us. The reason why perhaps that the mayor selected me, I was the past delegate, and I actually am sitting on committees on some of these organizations. So perhaps that will help you understand the reason for the appointments. But as you, as you go to these conferences and get involved with these organizations, and seek out opportunities to sit on policy committees, it's a great way to move up.
I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that you, people need to understand that, like you just mentioned before to me, we all need to be fair alternating rotation there. So everybody would, I always believe everyone should have a chance to take lead in certain position. And if you don't put a person on the position, how do you know they can do it? Same thing like today, I was talking to Mayor Frank Yokoyama, I say, you know what, you are awesome. You're really pro for the leading, that I really humbly accept that. But I just want to make sure we all understand that the position has to be equally appointed. Doesn't matter either, I mean, there is a difference, and when it's a delegate and when it's alternate, there is a difference. So I'll just take what you have offered today, and I just hope the next time we reappoint the person, we'll take it into consideration. Thank you. I'm closing.
Okay, so if you look at the twenty-four, twenty-five appointments list, you barely see my name.
I understand that.
So what I do as a council member is serve, and I go to League of California Cities conferences, I go to California Contract Cities conferences, I go to meetings, I volunteer for committees, I apply to be on committees, I go to National League of Cities conferences. I just try to serve to the best of my ability. For California Contract Cities Association, Mayor Protem Linda Johnson has been serving on the California Contract Cities Association on committees, and she's attending those committee meetings. She applied for them, and she's going to them. And she's been representing the city of Cerritos at the California Contract Cities, and I'd like to give her an opportunity to build her relationship, to continue to build her relationship with that, and maybe get into the leadership, and maybe someday, maybe even become an officer, and maybe become a president, just like some of our neighboring cities, like Lakewood, Councilmember Jeff Wood became the president of California Contract Cities. But the way that happens is, you have to have a continuity of involvement. And Linda Johnson, Mayor Protem Linda Johnson, has been our delegate to the California Contract Cities. And she's been doing more than that by participating in committees, volunteering for committees, and attending committees, going to their monthly meetings, which any of us can do. And she's been going to the conferences.
How do you know we're not going to the conferences?
I didn't say that. I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you what she did. And then for California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, which she was the alternate, as the alternate, even though she was not the delegate, she was going to those meetings. So I saw, I've heard her and seen her putting in the time as an alternate to the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. So now I'm giving her the chance to be the delegate. So just like you're the, like I appointed you to be the alternate to the California JPIA, even though I got requests from other council members to be on the California JPIA, I chose you to be the alternate for California JPIA over other council members sitting here.
I appreciate that explanation.
Just like Linda Johnson was the alternate for the California JPIA previously, now she has an opportunity to finally be the delegate after her putting in the time as the alternate.
I appreciate it. I just want to remind the mayor that had happened in history in City Council in the past, and caused a lot of freaking things outside. So this recommendation, in the future, we really need to make sure we all alternate, to be changed the position, the role, in order to learn, what about something happened to that person not able to attend, and all of a sudden, hey, you're gonna take the lead. That's gonna be hard. I think we all should have.
That's exactly.
The leadership should be really, everyone should have a chance to take the lead, then the person can be alternate. This is a new council elected people sitting here. I just want to remind you what happened, the past history caused a lot of issue among the resident. People don't think it was a fair for certain council member in the past. I want that history be wiped out from now on. The new story, new chapter start. I humbly accepted your pointed position today, but I just want you to remind you the history you all have went through before. That's it. I'm closing now. Thank you.
So for the Gateway City Cog, I've never, I've never been involved with the Gateway City Cog. I've never been the delegate. But I have attended meetings as an alternate. And finally, as the mayor, I am appointing myself to the Gateway City Cog. I'm using my mayor's discretion to appoint myself to the Gateway City Cog for the first time as opposed to attending meetings as an alternate.
Appreciate it. Call the call now.
And then lastly, for the League of California Cities, Annual General Assembly, I appointed Councilmember Linda Johnson, even though I got requests from other council members, because she is volunteering on League of California Cities committees. She's currently an appointee to two committees, that she's volunteering her time to do that. And so she asked me if she could, she requested if she could be the delegate to the Annual General Assembly meeting. That happens at a conference every fall, and it's one meeting. So I am asking her to be the delegate for one meeting in twenty twenty-five, fall of twenty twenty-five, to ascend, to attend the Annual General Assembly meeting in Long Beach as the delegate for one meeting. Call the question?
Can I have this question? I think you did mention about it, you appointed, but if if you feel like to attend, you know, councilwoman, you can attend.
Oh, I know that. I know that. I understand very well. Alternate, you can go if you want to. Been seventeen years. You know, I'm gonna call the order now. Just go ahead.
No, there is a correction. Any council member can attend the meetings, whether you're the delegate or the alternate, or neither. You can attend the conferences. You can attend the monthly meetings. You can attend. And this City Council will be supportive of it. That was the purpose of my motion earlier regarding our conference and travel expense budget. I didn't want there to be a limitation on any of these council, any of us council members to attend conferences, to attend meetings, and represent the city, and get involved, and join committees, and become officers. And that's how I became, that's how I became a regional council member in SCAG, not through a mayoral appointment.
Mayor Yokoyama, I called the order already, so closing.
Let's call the vote.
Motion was made by Councilmember Palito and seconded by Mayor Protem Johnson to approve the mayor's recommendations for service on internal ad hoc working groups and external boards, commissions, and committees. And I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Hong? Councilmember? Councilmember Palito?
Yes.
And Councilmember Say, yes?
Abstain. No, I say abstain.
Oh, abstain. Thank you. And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Yokoyama?
Yes.
Motion passes on a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Legislative Items, item ten A, anything, anything, City Manager?
No, sir. We have no items to present under either ten A or ten B.
Item eleven A, report from the City Manager.
Thank you. I have one item is happy news related to a recent promotion among our staff, and I'm gonna defer to City Clerk Cindy Nava to provide that information.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, at this late hour, I will not take too much of your time with this happy announcement. However, I am excited to announce the recent promotion of our previously acting City Clerk Specialist, Ms. Kimberly Dobson. She is now City Clerk Specialist and has been promoted from her previous role as Secretary Receptionist. Kimberly has been instrumental in ensuring the business continuity in our office since the retirement of our esteemed prior City Clerk Vita Barone, and our losing of one of our, our prior deputy to a promotion in another department. Kimberly has grown significantly over the last several years in our office, and especially over the last seven months. And I will turn it over to Kimberly to just say a few brief words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to take this opportunity to definitely thank Cindy Nava as well, City Clerk, for her guidance during this time. We definitely would not have been able to survive without her. So I really appreciate her patience and hard work during the election season. And I'm very happy with this opportunity to continue working with a great Cerritos team. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Is there anything else on item eleven A?
We have no other items under eleven A, Mayor.
Okay, item eleven B, City Council Communications. Councilmember Say?
First, I would like to congratulate our newly elected Mayor Protem Ms. Johnson on her well-deserved duty victory. Additionally, congratulations to Ms. Johnson on being selected as the recipient of the twenty twenty-five Women of Distinction Award by Assemblywoman Sharon Quick Silver's office. I would like to recognize California First Chinese-American Woman voter Tai Liang Choit, who was the first Chinese-American woman to pass the Silver Service Exam and secure a government position. While we celebrate those achievements, we must also acknowledge that the journey toward full equality is ongoing. There is still work to be done by ensure that all women, regardless of their background, have equal opportunity and representation. This is because Mayor Protem Ms. Johnson called me, so you need to wear a white collar to respect the woman's suffering. This is because Mayor Pro Tem Ms. Johnson called me, so you need a white collar to respect the women's suffering in the past. But so I decided I want to give a report on this before. Otherwise, I do want to say I am honored and humbled by the trust you have shown in me to serve on this council. Thank you to the voters of the city of Cerritos for your engagement and to my family and friends and supporters for your encouragement. I look forward to work alongside my fellow council member to address the challenges and opportunity facing our city. My commitment is to listen, lead integrity and ensure that every voice is heard. For me at this position, I always say one vote, one voice, one vote. And I want to let my mayor protein and mayor to know that tonight, tonight's your decision. I respect you, the decision, but all I want to say is look the past history and learn from the past history and do not let it repeat again. Thank you. That's my report.
Councilmember Hong?
Well, good morning, everyone. Nail it. Okay, I'm making sure, but I still have to say, you know, first of all, congratulations to our new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. I believe you were do a great job and you're a great leaders. Thank you. I have a lot to learn from both of you. And I humbly want you, you know, I'm like a sponge. I'm willing to learn. So and even from all of you, I appreciate all the citizens that give me the chance and to fulfill my dream to serve the city. And I thank, I just want to thank, maybe not too many people watching right now, but they can see the reprogram, you know, rerun. I would still want to thanks all the voters that they cast their vote in me. They have the confidence in me. And I want to thank them again. I'm humbly and excited to accept this job. I'll do my best. And I will fulfill whatever promise I have made during my campaign. I try my best and you can have, you can come on me on that. But most importantly, I would just want to say thank you. Thank you all the voters. And really appreciate you give me the chance to serve the city and the community that I love. And I give me the chance to work such with such a great staff here. Like I always remember what they were talking about. We have the best of the best staff in our city. And I wanted to make the city even better because I know the city has a lot of potential and we can all grow together. Okay. God bless America and God bless Cerritos. I love it. I love our city. Thank you again. Thank you all the citizens I know. Good night. Good morning and good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark Polito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two requests, given that there's not one, not two, but three council members. I was going to say three new council members, but you know, I'm a returning council member. But even though I'm returning, I've been out for five years. And so under eleven B where it allows for requests to be made of staff or reports which will be presented to the city council at a subsequent meeting and for scheduling of future agenda items. I'd like to get council concurrence on agendizing a closed session conference with city attorney to provide an overview of previous, current and potential litigation of the city. I just think it's very important that we be brought up to speed. And I think this would be perhaps a good refresher for the two continuing council members, but most definitely for the two brand new members that we do our due diligence to be aware of any exposure to litigation. And in full transparency, it was the most common question when I was campaigning about why in the world not one, not two, but three council members decided not to seek reelection? Not by term limits and not by death, but by choice. And a lot of people are wondering, but what we need to do is we need to know. And that's why it would be in closed session. So I'm asking my council colleagues to concur with putting this on the agenda.
I give concurrence. I'd like to know.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and the second one is similarly, you know, for the edification of our new members. If we could have agendize a closed session item to provide the city council with an overview of the the current contracts with the three city charter employees, our city manager, our city clerk and city attorney. So that we could all be brought up to speed of what is contained in the three contracts of the three employees that are under the employ of the council. I think it's important that we are aware and that we have a clear understanding of the relationship between the council and those three charter employees.
I concur.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to
Ask for clarification. Did you want that at the next council meeting or at an upcoming council meeting? Those two items?
I think both of them are important, but I think doing both on the same night after a long council meeting would be a little bit too much. So I'm fine with.
You don't want to go till four?
I already pushed off my budget concerns until May. So I'm trying to be, I'm trying to achieve a lot because I know that folks are expecting a lot. And yeah, so let's do on separate nights. Okay, and I just wanted to wrap up by just saying yesterday was amazing. And I think each and every one of us should be proud of it. I want to give my due thanks to the city manager and your team and to the city clerk for her role in yesterday's proceedings, as well as Chelsea, who I understand was instrumental in leading that effort. And all those at the CCPA behind the scenes who helped execute just such a beautiful evening in our city's history. It really made me proud and in all transparency and honesty. My heart has been heavy for the past half decade. And it, what I saw last night was that we have hope and promise still in Cerritos. And I saw it also as the beginning of a period of which I hope will be a sustained period of peace in the valley. And with that, thank you and good night. It's good to be back.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes, I'm going to forego my report tonight because of the lateness. However, I do have one item. Under eleven B, we are also able to maybe perhaps schedule future changes in our upcoming calendar. We, the city supports our Community Family Guidance Center. And they have an annual gala and the gala happens to be on May eighth of this year. I wanted to ask if there's a possibility to make a change to our council meeting. We have a May eighth council meeting as well. If there's a possible way to make a change to the date of our council meeting. So there would be no conflict so that we can go to the, to support Community Family Guidance Center on May eighth. Is that something that maybe you need to go back and check with staff and you know, come back with a report later and say it's feasible, it's not feasible. I'm okay with that too. We don't have to decide tonight.
Okay, yeah, that would probably be best since we do have contract cities and ICSC.
There's a lot. And I want to make sure that Councilmember Polito gets his questions in before we finalize the budget. Thank you.
Anything else? I'd like to agendize for the next city council meeting. Agendize the city councils review and consideration of the rescission of the protocol manual of the Cerrito City Council Protocol Manual. So agendize the review, consideration and rescission of the city, of the Cerrito City Council Protocol Manual for our April ten city council meeting.
I concur.
Okay, meeting adjourned. As there was not time to schedule an agenda item for city council consideration of another alternate on March nineteen, former Mayor Naresh Solanke appointed me, Mayor Frank Yokoyama, as the city's voting delegate on this committee specifically for the March nineteen meeting. That's the end of the urgency appointment report. Thank you, city of Cerritos. Meeting adjourned.